All right then, good evening. The Senate will come to order. We are on Order of Business Number 10, introduction, first reading and reference.
Senate Bill Number Three, introduced by Senate Committee of the Whole, revises provisions relating to unemployment compensation and a bill.
Thank you, Senator Canizaro.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer Senate Bill Number Three to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Senator Canizaro has referred Senate Bill Number Three to the Committee of the Whole. Are there any objections? If not, so ordered.
And that concludes Order of Business Number 10.
Thank you. Order of Business Number Nine, motions, resolutions and notices. Senator Canizaro.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Senate resolve itself into a Committee of the Whole for the purpose of considering Senate Bill Number Three and other matters as outlined in the Governor's Proclamation, with Senator Canizaro serving as Chair and Senator Raddie serving as Vice-Chair.
Thank you. Senator Canizaro has moved, made a motion. Any remarks? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're in recess.
Members of the committee and those of you who are with us online, we are having another bill on this agenda, Senate Bill Number Three, which revises provisions relating to unemployment compensation. Members of the committee have before them a hard copy of Senate Bill Number Three, and for those of you who are following with us online, you should be able to access a copy of Senate Bill Number Three as well. Our intent with this bill hearing is much like we've had the remain, previously in the day, rather, which is that we will take testimony on Senate Bill Number Three, we will then move to public testimony, we'll allow the committee to ask questions, then we'll move to public testimony. We will take them in the order of those in favor of Senate Bill Number Three, those in opposition to Senate Bill Number Three, and finally, those in neutral on Senate Bill Number Three. I would remind everyone who is watching online that you can find instructions for how to participate in the public testimony portion of this hearing at the bottom of our agenda, which is also available on the legislative website. And with that, we are going to go ahead and begin the hearing on Senate Bill Number Three. We will be joined remotely here in the chamber by Francisco Morales from the Governor's Office, as well as Christopher Sewell from the Department of Employment Training and Rehabilitation, and whoever would like to begin. As soon as you're ready, we are ready to hear from you.
Francisco Morales with the Office of the Governor, for the record. These unprecedented times require unprecedented measures to ensure that Nevadans who are out of work for no fault of their own are able to access their unemployment benefits as quickly as possible. Since this pandemic, the Office of the Governor has worked closely with Dieter to try to identify as many flexibilities and waivers to expedite these benefits for Nevadans. But we know that ultimately, a lot of the requirements are laid out in statute. We are thankful to have worked with the legislature to identify further areas in state law where we can provide Dieter with additional flexibility to move some barriers that have really hindered their ability to pay claims quickly. At a very high level, this bill also will allow us to be better prepared for any potential economic turmoil in the coming months. It will also allow Dieter to provide or to take full advantage of additional aid that is provided by the federal government. At a high level, and some of the important provisions of the bill include changing the statutory triggers so that we can get an additional seven weeks of federally funded extended unemployment benefits for Nevadans. This bill also addresses some of the common issues surrounding deductible income, which often create delays for claimants, but also provide a massive workload for Dieter. Also in this bill, we are including some provisions that are intended to provide employers with employer charging relief so that they do not see their overall tax liability increase because they had to lay off people and put them on unemployment. I want to just go over certain provisions of the bill and then turn it over to my colleagues to give a more in-depth overview. Section Four is one of the other major provisions that were changing of policy change, and Section Four is intended to strengthen our statutory provisions around unemployment benefits and defining who somebody is unemployed. One of the things that we saw over the last five months, and particularly during the period of time when we've had the extra $600, is that folks had to choose often between going back to work and collecting the extra $600. Generally, if somebody in any given week collects more wages than they're entitled to in the weekly benefit amount, then they're not eligible for any unemployment benefits. And so if somebody made even, you know, $10 or $12 over the weekly benefit amount, then they were precluded from accessing the additional $600 that was being given to them by the federal government. And by changing that formula to 1.5, we're going to allow more Nevadans to be able to stay connected and attached to the employer, we allow them to continue to earn a little bit more hours in their work and not have to choose between their job or staying unemployment benefits. And I use as an example, knowing that the $600 has expired, but we just want to be ready in case that the federal government decides to extend that benefit, even if it's at a reduced amount. There's a lot of speculation about what it will be, but we just want to make sure that we're able to also incentivize low-wage workers to continue to go to work, but also access that federal plus sub-provision. We're also, we're also including in this bill a process that we were able to work out with LCB and the legislature to promulgate emergency regulations to better adapt our statutory requirements for unemployment benefits with the ongoing changes by the federal government. You know, even over the last four months or five months since the pandemic started here, and the shutdown happened here in Nevada, the Department of Labor has issued probably dozens of different guidance documents, UPOS, and the intent is to just equip the ESD Administrator with the flexibility to be able to make the necessary changes in order to conform with those requirements by the Department of Labor, but also to be able to change our statutory requirements to take advantage of additional flexibility that is provided. Again, Sections Six and Seven of the bill modify the triggers, which is required to be able to get an additional seven weeks of federally funded extended benefits. Sections Eight, Nine and Ten generally talk about deductible income. In ordinary times, I think it's fine to have these statutory provisions, but what we saw is that a lot of workers were paid some sort of deductible income, whether it was severance pay or vacation pay, wages in lieu of notice pay, and the way that the statute reads right now, Dieter has to really adjudicate those claims and figure out, you know, how many weeks of unemployment of wages that payout covers, and it just creates some delays and more barriers before a claimant can access their unemployment benefits. And this is also important because, again, taking into account what we saw over the last few months, you had employers who paid, who paid their workers wages in lieu of notice, vacation pay, severance pay, or other type of payments to help. We don't want those payments actually delaying somebody's benefits. To the contrary, you want employers to incentivize workers and to help workers when they're getting laid off without having to think of whether or not that's going to have an implication and a delay in their unemployment benefits. And finally, another provision that's in the bill is we are trying to address the issue of what could and may constitute good cause in the event that somebody who is, who fits into one of the vulnerable categories, you know, refuses to go back to work. We have laid out sort of a guidance in the bill. Ultimately, the Administrator is going to have to promulgate regulations with more specific scenarios than what's in here. This just serves as a guide, and that regulation will have to be scrutinized and submitted to the Department of Labor for approval, but the intent here is to just begin to give a little guidance and some legislative intent as to what could constitute good cause for refusing to work, I'm sorry, refusing to return back to suitable work. I do want to mention that we're hardly the first state to have done that. Many other states have done that as well, and so we just think it's a very critical part of the bill, given vulnerable populations and the risk that they may have to undertake before going back to work. Those are the major provisions of the bill. We've got Jessica Dis from our office here, we've got our team at Dieter, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We will now move to questions from members of the committee. We will begin with Senator Settlemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a 33-page bill that was just kind of introduced to us, so I'm going to start off, but I may ask you to allow me to ask questions a second time before we get out of the Committee of the Whole, just due to that fact. Under Section Two, will this allow you to start utilizing app-based programs for individuals to file or remedy some of their employment claims or problems? And I guess the question I ask is, as I look at some of the other states such as New Mexico and so forth, and they had the ability to switch to app-based programs, which allowed them to be able to process, go from processing 250 to 300 to 3,000 a day. So I was just curious if this would allow for that type of technology.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you to Senator Settlemeyer, this is Jessica Dis from the Governor's Office, for the record, and I will let the folks at Dieter chime in if they feel that they have anything to add to what I'm going to say, but essentially, this contemplates, this section, Senator, contemplates utilizing the existing electronic processes, the UI NV website and the Employee NV website, that are used to communicate and employers through that system. Dieter already uses those systems to communicate electronically with employers. This will just allow them to do so in any case that's not prohibited by law.
Okay, I guess I find that question, so we're not doing anything to actually speed up or allow more individuals to be able to have their claims processed? I mean, obviously, you know, we've gotten a lot of calls, and so have you, you know, individuals that are trying to apply, and unfortunately, I'm being told that unfortunately, there's been some bad actors out there that have tried to swamp the system with fraudulent claims, and that you guys are doing your best to clear those out, and I'm just trying to think, you know, is there anything we can do in this bill to help you be able to process those individuals that are out there that are in desperate straits that need assistance? And I was just hoping that that might be within Section Two, but if it's not, is there anywhere within this, since I haven't had time to read it all, anywhere in this where we're trying to give you some CARES Act funds or something in order to give you the resources necessary to investigate the fraud that has been perpetrated so that we can get that cleared out, so we can actually get to helping those individuals that are out there that need this assistance, that are being backed up due to the amount of fraud that's going on? Or is there anything in this bill that helps go after that?
Madam Chair, to Senator Settlemeyer, there's a couple of, there's a couple of multi-pronged answers to that question. I think there's definitely things in this bill that will help, that will help speed up things and roll back some of the requirements that were in statute. There is further authority to be able to, again, go through the statute in detail and promulgate emergency regulations to modify some of the requirements that the folks have to, have to go through before they get benefits. To your point about using app-based, third-party solutions, no, Section Two does not, does not speak to that. Section, Section Two specifically pertains to Dieter's ability to send claimants electronic notifications. The reason why we don't, we have not considered using those third-party vendor apps, it's because of that same reason, because of the fraud. They actually, they overpromise in what they can do because we have our own system, we have our own, our own servers, we have, we've got our own interface, and really, really the only way that folks could apply for unemployment using a third-party app is if we were able to connect them to our system, which we would, we would never do because that would pose risks to the integrity of the system and probably subject us to other cyber attacks. You know, to your point about, about the fraud and the robo stuff, I'll let the folks at Dieter press that. It's an ongoing issue, but we have taken this affirmative step to make sure that we strengthen and add more protections, like our system is not undertaken or hijacked by, by those robo spammers, but I'll let them speak to that.
This is Kimberly Gah from Dieter. To Senator Settlemeyer, do you have any other specific questions?
One of the questions I had was, what would it be necessary, what type of funds could we try to find you or get to you, you know, through CARES Act or something, so that you can hire enough individuals to investigate the fraud and try to get on top of this issue?
This is Kimberly Gah for the record, to the Senator. We do have a resource need, and I am putting forward a staffing plan to the Governor's Office, and it probably will make its way to LCB Fiscal to add additional staffing. It would be helpful to have additional CARES Act funding, and I do know that the federal delegation as well has brought up instances where they're trying to figure out carve-outs for any potential legislation coming forward that would provide integrity-based resources, specifically for information technology security pieces and funding for administration, which includes staffing and those kinds of things for that specifically.
Thank you, Kimberly. Last question. As we look at the concept of allowing more individuals to be able to apply and not be kicked off of the system, just for my own knowledge, if we keep the system as it is without adding additional individuals that currently are not able to qualify, what's your prediction of when do you think the system sadly, you know, it's just inevitable, we're going to have to borrow money from the feds, you know, and this Dieter system as unemployment insurance system, as we've done in the past, what's your estimation of how much longer the current funding levels potentially will hold out for? Do you have a concept of a date, in two months, three months, two days?
Senator, to you, this is David Schmidt for the record, Chief Economist for Dieter. Currently, we have about $450 million in the State's Unemployment Trust Fund with expenditure rates of about $100 million per week. That gives us about four weeks at current payout rates before the trust fund would be exhausted. We also expect to see some revenue come in within the next couple of weeks, as those employers that still were employing people through the April to June quarter make their quarterly contributions into the state's trust fund, but that would probably only take us until early September, until we would start to begin borrowing. And the provisions of this bill wouldn't have any significant impact on the rate at which those expenditures could be going out.
Thank you all for those answers, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Kukfer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we start, can, can we get clarification as to whether we're going to be able to get multiple rounds of questions in, or if I have to ask them all right now?
And I would ask all members of the committee to go ahead and ask your questions while you have the opportunity, the intent being everyone to get a chance to be able to ask questions.
Oh, I wish I could have read the whole bill then. So why don't I start, I guess maybe at the back, in Section 15, and Ms. Gah, it says that this, this bill requires you to create regulations establishing justifications related to COVID-19 that may constitute good cause for a person to refuse suitable work. It says, it gives some examples that you may include that aren't required. Can you talk about the process that you're going to go through to come up with those examples, those good causes?
This is Kimberly Gah for the record, to the Senator. This, this section, my understanding is permissive with examples of what would be considered. We would have to run this language specifically through DOL to make sure it conforms to both the CARES Act and the unemployment insurance program language requirements that we receive in guidance, so we would have to probably go through that process to make sure anything we were going to promulgate conforms.
I don't think it's permissive. It says, "The Administrator of the Employment Security Division of Dieter shall by regulation establish justifications." So have you, have you started talking to the Department of Labor, gotten any guidance from them over refusal to work conditions?
We have started several conversations with them. This bill draft that we received today is the most recent, and we have sent it off to the Department of Labor late this afternoon, asking them to weigh in, but we do not expect that act this evening, but we have asked, yes.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm glad I'm not the only one who hasn't seen the whole bill until recently. Let me, so I'll work back, I guess, to Section 12. Page, and I've, I don't know which version everyone's working on, the one that was on our desks, it's page 25. It's mirrored, it looks like it, this is language that mirrors maybe in Section 13 as well, giving you the ability to make certain waivers. I believe Section 20, Section 12, though, relates specifically to rate setting. Can you talk about what, what this change does and how this may impact rate setting going forward?
This is Kimberly Gah for the record, Senator, I'm looking at, I'm trying to look at what you're looking at, so I can give you a correct answer. Hold on, one second.
This is David Schmidt, Chief Economist for Dieter, again, for the record. The Section Eight here, to amend in our 612551, is intended to be able to work with the provisions of the Families First Act, which provided two allotments of funds, one of which was dependent upon the state taking action to relieve benefit charges to employers who were affected by COVID to affect their tax rate setting. Now, this is something that's been bounced around an awful lot, and in order to provide the most flexibility to carry that out, I believe that's why the language of this section was fairly broad to accomplish that purpose.
Okay, so, yeah, so I remember we dealt with that in IFC, right, that we were accepting a federal grant that was going to require basically certain hold harmless provisions on the, on the UI rates charged to employers, or at least not, maybe not on the entirety of the rate, but not to, not to move people up or down bands, right, based on their experience rating? Is that, is that fairly stated?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, but it doesn't prevent people's, the actual rates from going up or down, right?
That's correct, Senator. Taking action to relieve employers of their benefit charges would change the potential distribution of employers with respect to one another, but does not put any cap or floor on what the potential average contribution rates for employers would be.
Thank you for that, because I'm, as we, as I move further towards the front of the bill, as we talk about expanded eligibility, is there any assessment over what the, what the changes in this bill will do to our trust fund and our average weekly benefit payouts, and how much we may have to borrow when we start needing to borrow to, to continue meeting our, our benefit obligations?
Yes, Senator David Schmidt, again, for the record. We've done some analysis, for example, looking at Section Four, which changes, adds some people in to provide some additional eligibility. If there is a further extension of the FPUC program or something that similarly adds dollars on top of eligibility, this would provide additional benefits to people who earn above the weekly benefit amount, but who still receive a weekly benefit amount of at least $1. Currently, we have 10,000 to 20,000 people over the course of the pandemic who have had what we call excess earnings, where their earnings are above their weekly benefit amount, and therefore, they don't qualify for any benefits. Using some generous assumptions, if half of those people were to now become eligible under that provision, and they were all earning the weekly benefit amount, I would guess that both of those numbers would be lower, but just to put sort of a high number on it, that would be about $2.5 million per week in additional benefit payments, or roughly 2% to 3% of our current benefit payout levels. So if you were to extend that assay over the course of a 13-week period, then you would be looking at about $30 million, which is a lot of money, but with, in comparison to how much we're paying out overall in that same period, we would probably pay about, pay out about $1.3 billion in unemployment insurance benefits.
Certainly. Have you, have you done a similar analysis for the Have you done a similar analysis for the changes related to sort of a set aside for PTO and vacation and any severance pay?
I don't have any analysis on those sections at this time. It should be noted, currently, we have about 14,000 people, or excuse me, 14,000 deductible income issues that are currently outstanding and pending resolution. If you were to assume two weeks of paid benefits for that period that might be affected by this, that would be a little bit less than $1,000 per person, which would put you a little bit less than $14 million overall.
Does, thank you for that, Mr. Schmidt, thank you, Madam Chair. Does the, is this an effort to sort of clear out the backlog that we're currently facing, or is this a process that, as a policy matter, we believe should sort of last indefinitely?
I can take that. Madam Chair, through you and Senator Kiefer, I think it's both. I think there's a lot of numbers being tossed around, and I think Dave for that really great analysis. But what we should also anticipate and think about is that for all those people, and again, this is going back, but also thinking that there will be some sort of extension to the supplement, whether it's 300 or 200, you know, we're paying, we're paying that from the trust fund, whether it's, you know, 20 million or 30 million, but we're also, by expanding the pool a little bit, we're allowing to have more money come into the state in the form of a federal plus of four Nevadans. And so I think that it's, that's the policy decision that we've taken. I think it's, I think we can review it over the next, you know, over the next month and before the next session, the next regular session, but I think it's really important for us to make this policy decision, to make sure that we can take advantage of more federal dollars coming into the state.
Yeah.
But to the backlog, yes, we also are making some of these policy changes to deal with some of the outstanding pending issues.
Thank you. In Section 3 of the bill relating to the emergency regulations, again, I think it empowers Ms. Gah to determine whether an emergency exists. Is there a specific type of emergency that this is getting to, or what are the sort of standards that would be used to determine whether these emergency regs could be initiated? Is it designed to be related to an emergency within the system, or an emergency sort of amongst the populace? I don't, it's not particularly clear.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair, to Senator Kiefer. This is Jessica Dis with the Governor's Office. Senator, that section really is coupled closely with Sections 5 and 14. In Section 3, the standard for traditional NRS 233B emergency regulation standards for when to promulgate emergency regulations. The changes encapsulated here are to provide a process through which Dieter can be a little bit more simple than they currently can when the federal government allows for flexibility and changes in the state of emergency. And so Section 5 language pertains specifically to when there's an NRS 414 state of emergency. But Section 3 relates to traditional, you know, 233B emergency regulations. It's just establishing essentially a slightly new process for these Dieter ones.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And Mr. Morales, when you were offering your initial overview of the bill, I think you referred to Sections 6 and 7 as trigger language, but I couldn't, I just haven't been able to sit down and look at the actual math on some of these new calculations. Can someone explain what's actually being changed and the impact that it's going to have on either the recipients or the system?
Sure. Madam Chair, through you and Senator Kiefer, Section 5 and Section, particularly around the triggers, Section 6, I'll have Dave run over the specifics, but this is something that we've done in the past, and I know Ms. Jones is also on the line, this is something we've done in the past during the Great Recession a couple of times, to be able to change the triggers generally, to make them a little bit more, I guess, a little easier for the state to be able to trigger extended benefits. So it's not new, this is modeled Department of Labor standard. States that choose to use that language, the trigger language, will get an additional seven weeks of federally funded extended benefits. But I would refer to Dave or Ms. Jones that can clarify best what exactly those triggers are. Dave?
Thank you, Dave Schmidt, again, for the record. This language is, I believe, largely modeled on something that happened during the Great Recession as well. If you look at AB 469 of the 2009 session, there is an optional provision within federal unemployment insurance law. If a state has a trigger to begin a period of state extended benefits based on the state's unemployment rate instead of the state's insured unemployment rate, the distinction being that the insured unemployment rate is a ratio of unemployment claims to total employment in the state, whereas the overall unemployment rate that's added in this language as a trigger is the unemployment rate that the Bureau of Labor Statistics calculates once a month for each state. If you have a trigger based on the unemployment rate, then the state can enter into what's called a high unemployment period. The base trigger for state extended benefits under this is average unemployment rate over three months of 6.5%. The high unemployment rate is a trigger of a three-month average rate of 8%. Currently, the last three months of unemployment in Nevada have been about 30%, 25%, and 15%. So we are well in access of that particular measure. And what a high unemployment period does is it adds an additional seven weeks of benefits to the state extended benefit program, bringing the total potential weeks from 13 to 20 weeks, depending on a person's base period eligibility. Another effect of this bill would be that the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program is, the number of weeks available in that program is based on the total regular unemployment insurance plus the total state extended benefit eligibility in a state. And so this trigger would also raise the number of weeks for pandemic unemployment assistance from 39 weeks to 46 weeks.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for the indulgence.
Senator Hardy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess my questions may sound simple. The CARES funding, how much are we getting? What's our unfunded mandate that's going to require us to borrow money? Who that money is going to come from that we're going to borrow? What's the estimate of the percentage of fraud and the gross amount and the additional staffing cost? And then, in words that even I could understand, on Section 7, page 14, 39 times and 80% and 29 times the average, where are those numbers and what do they mean? So those are the questions that I have, if you can figure out how to answer those. Not necessarily in that order.
Madam Chair, through you and Senator Hardy, we'll let Dave Schmidt answer this one.
Thank you, Dave Schmidt, again, for the record. To begin on Page 11, the 80% of the basic benefits, I believe is what the senator was asking about. What this is, is if the eligibility for the state extended benefit program is based on a ratio to a person's eligibility in the regular unemployment insurance program. The standard is 50%. So if someone is eligible for 26 weeks of benefits, which is the maximum, then the state extended benefit period eligibility is 13 weeks. If, under the provisions here, in a high unemployment period, that rises from 50 to 80%, which is where that additional seven weeks comes from, someone eligible for 26 weeks would instead be eligible for up to 20 weeks of benefits. But that is a relative measure. So someone who is eligible for only 20 weeks of benefits would typically be eligible for an additional 10 weeks of benefits under the state extended benefit program. That would rise to, something became unable to do mouth on the top of my head, but it would be a little bit less than seven weeks, I believe it would add about four to six weeks to that person's claim. With respect to the total CARES Act money and how funding for that is coming in, the programs under the CARES Act are funded primarily in two different ways. There are implementation grants for each of the various provisions, including the Pandemic and Unemployment Assistance Program, or PUA, Pandemic Emergency Unemployment Compensation, or PUC, and Federal Pandemic Unemployment Compensation, or FPUC. Those grants were requested back in April. In addition, for each of those programs, there is an ongoing reimbursement that functions in slightly different ways. For the smaller programs, the ongoing expenses are requested from the Department of Labor on a reimbursement basis. For the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program, the ongoing expenses are primarily funded on a workload-driven estimate, where we report the number of claims and applications that are coming in. The Department of Labor applies the formula and then tells us how much ongoing workload-driven funding we would be receiving.
So your 80% and your 20 times and your 46 times, where do those come from?
Dave Schmidt, again, for the record, those are all standards from the Department of Labor and the extended benefit law. The provision for a high unemployment period and the effect on benefits in each state are provided for by the Department of Labor. And so the only way that we can request those additional weeks of benefits, or qualify for, I should say, those additional weeks of benefits, is to meet the average unemployment rate of 8% over three-month standard that is in the law here and was also in AB 469 back in 2009.
And where are you going to get the money? Where are you going to borrow the money from that you can't get through the CARES Act?
Dave Schmidt, again, for the record, the money for the state extended benefits here is all paid for through the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which typically the state extended benefit program is funded 50% from the state trust fund and 50% by the federal government. For states that qualify for both allotments of additional funds in the Families First Act, there is a 100% reimbursement, or 100% payment, I should say, of the state extended benefit program. And so these additional weeks of benefits would be completely drawn down from the federal government.
So it's a loan that is forgivable, is that what you're saying?
Senator, it said I would characterize it as a, more a federally paid-for program, similar to the CARES Act programs, like Pandemic Unemployment Assistance. That money would be drawn down to the state directly from the federal government to then be paid out to claimants. So Nevada draws down from the feds and simply pays it out to the claimants. It's not a loan, because it's a temporary provision instead that fully funds the program instead of only partially funding it.
No, it's not going to be a loan, it's not going to be a liability to the state. And we, as I understand it, what you're talking about, we don't have an unfunded mandate then, that we're depending on the state to come up with money that we don't have?
That is correct, Senator.
And then the estimate of the percentage of fraud or the amount of fraud, do you have feelings for what we're looking at?
This is Kimberly Gah for the record. Senator, to your question, they are very different currently in the programs. So we're talking the federal pandemic unemployment assistance, we are seeing significantly higher numbers in that program because of several constructs of that program do not have the same check and balances as our traditional unemployment insurance system does, because that is for gig and independent contract workers, and we don't have a employer check mechanism. So there is work that the staff have to do in order to vet and validate some of those claims, which is pretty labor-intensive, but we are seeing significantly higher numbers that I would say are in the tens of thousands in comparison to what we're seeing in traditional unemployment. However, we are also seeing pretty sophisticated schemes in both programs and unemployment, traditional unemployment insurance, we're also seeing some pretty sophisticated schemes of fraud in that regard. We don't have, I don't have, like, solid numbers to give you in traditional unemployment, because we're still working through the data in order to figure out how we would report that. So that's to be determined at this point, but I would say it's significantly higher than we've ever seen in that program as well.
So are we talking 1% or 100% or in the middle?
For sure in the middle.
So we've got a 50% potential fraud, and that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Senator Hammond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I got a couple of questions as well, probably pigging back off a little bit of some of my colleagues here that have been already asking questions. You know, as many, I'm sure many of my colleagues, as I have, received many phone calls, many emails, a lot of requests from folks to help them out during this period of time, many from both UI and PUA. It was asked earlier about the backlog and the pending issues, and you had addressed a little bit about the pending issues. You know, I'm looking at this legislation, trying to read through it as quickly as possible to see where, in fact, this piece of legislation might help out those folks, especially those who've been waiting months to receive some sort of aid. Many of those who signed up for the PUA at the very beginning, when it was, when they were eligible to sign up, have been waiting, in many cases, nothing is on their applications in the way of problems or situations that need to be resolved. Matter of fact, everything is cleared, and yet they get a payment date, and then the payment date is moved back and moved back and moved back. They keep redoing these payment dates. So I'm hoping to get clarification on, when you said the backlog that you would like to take care of and the pending issues, is that one of the pending issues that you would like to address through this legislation? And if so, is that the only one? And could you give us a few more of those? Because again, when people keep calling us up, it would be nice to be able to give them some clarification on what's being done at your level, and I'd like to know if this legislation actually addresses that. That'd be my first question.
Madam Chair, through you and Senator Hammond, I think the answer is yes. So this late in the game, a lot of the claims that have not been resolved in the traditional UI system, mostly it's because they require adjudication. And what adjudication means is that they require taking a set of facts, applying what's in statute, and then making a determination that is consistent with the facts and the requirements. For example, you've got the 4,000, or I'm sorry, 14,000 deductible income issues. In this bill, the administrator will have the ability to waive those requirements. You also have a lot of pending issues concerning You also have a lot of pending issues concerning people that have not go back to work because they have a medical condition, a category. This bill will provide some guidance to better or more quicker adjudicate those specific claims. And so what we're talking about here is we're talking about claims that require applying these particular requirements to the set of facts. And our goal is to make and remove some of those barriers out of the way so that the folks at Dieter can process these claims a lot quicker. And at one point, I want to say that we had upwards of 30,000. And that's because at the business closure stage, a lot of folks were paid vacation pay, were paid wages in lieu of notice. And I'll let the folks at Dieter address the full aspect of it. But I will reiterate that.
Mr. Morales, before you move on, before we move on to the Dieter folks, you kept cutting out, you said something about 30,000. I thought that was pretty important that you finished that statement. So if you could go back and tell us what you said right after 30,000, that would be great. And before you do that, I just want to reiterate that the folks that I was talking to, many of them, there was no reason to adjudicate, there was no indication that there's any problems with their applications. And it sounds like, you know, my colleague in front of me was asking about more money from CARES Act in order to help the fraud. It sounded like that to many of these folks, it was a fraud case that was preventing them or fraud, the potential for fraud that was preventing them from getting their cases approved and their payments made. But I think that what you're saying is if we can get some more money, some more resources, some CARES Act money to you, that this might be another one of those pending issues that can be taken care of as well as the other ones that can be adjudicated much quicker. But I do want to go back and hear your statement on the 30,000, if you could.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I believe that at one point during the height, we had upwards of 30,000 deductible income issues. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
And so, and that's the impetus for the sections that deal with vacation pay, severance pay, wages in lieu of notice. Because you had a situation where a lot of those workers were paid, you know, $200, $300, $500, $600 in vacation pay that they had been racking up for some time, their safety net, and they had to, the folks at Dieter had to adjudicate those claims and figure out how that lump sum payment, you know, fit into the broader scheme of their wages. And I would add that, you know, of course, if somebody was getting, if somebody got a payout for, you know, $500 or $300 or $1,000, you know, they might have potentially missed weeks in which they would have received that $600 because we were allowing that vacation pay to cover those wages. And it's, I gotta say, it's a, we've dealt with thousands, of course, of constituent cases here in our office, and these things get really complicated. Sometimes folks, you know, sometimes folks don't realize, sometimes that they have something in their claim from the past, and, you know, it's not always a black and white issue. And it really, some of these statutory requirements are tough, and they require a lot of work. You know, a good example is NRS 612380, where if somebody leaves their job voluntarily, you know, oftentimes they have to go not just to the last employer, like the last employer. Other states have really tackled, modified, or suspended wherever possible in order to just beat up those claims.
Okay, and I just didn't know if you had thrown it over to Dieter as well. I wasn't sure if they're going to chime in or not, but if they don't, I have another question for you.
This is Kimberly Goff for the record. To the Senator, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the issue types now or if you prefer to go back to Mr. Morales and finish the questions, I'm happy to answer either way.
Okay, again, I guess what I'm looking at is, you know, with this particular bill, as you read the language in here, talking about the backlog and the pending issues, how do you see this bill being able to help you resolve some of the major pending issues that are out there, other than the one that was just discussed?
Oh, so Kimberly Goff for the record. If this was enacted, it would be from day forward. Based on the way I'm understanding it, it would be from the time of passage. So it would take any reoccurring issues that come in from that date forward and eliminate that process. So for example, what Mr. Morales was referring to, the deductible income for that week, then we would no longer have to adjudicate that specific claim week for that issue, that that would be suspended, for lack of a better term.
So would that, in effect, free up your time so that you can go back and handle some of the backlog that's there?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, then I'll go on to the second question I had, and then I only have one after this. In regards to Sections 8, 9, and 10, which I believe are found on pages 15, 16, and 17, it talks a little bit about PTO, vacation time, and so forth. And you're basically putting language in here, talking about waiving or modifying the period of disqualification. In each one of those sections, I believe it's in subsection 2A, you have the term "for good cause." That's, you know, in my understanding, it's a very broad, a very broad term. I wanted to know if you might be able to give us a little bit more of an idea of what you have in mind for "good cause," to kind of put something on the record so we have an idea of what you're indicating or what you're kind of, where you're going for those people who are being educated, I guess, in this area? And that might be for Mr. Morales, I think, as you're explaining the bill.
Madam Chair, through you, Senator Hammond. Sure, I think "good cause" would definitely be a pandemic, a state of emergency, or as otherwise necessary to expedite, you know, the health and safety while being put. What we're, and we made this decision to not eliminate or modify that statute that's been there for many years. Instead, we want to use the flexibility, like in times like we are now where we've had unprecedented amount of claims, be able to go in and say that, you know, for this period of time, we are going to, you know, disregard those types of deductible income. So yes, the intent is not for this to be just, you know, in normal times, just because. But certainly during a period of an emergency or a pandemic or health crisis, that's where we're going out with all three of those sections.
Very well then. I just wanted to make sure we got an idea of what we're going there. I guess I'm going to go to Section 15, I think, which is already addressed by my colleague from District 16. In this language, I think it's Section 15, Subsection 1, it says, "The employer cannot offer suitable means by which the person may work remotely." If it's not suitable, I guess you can say it's unsuitable or not suitable. Who makes that determination of whether or not it's suitable or not?
Madam Chair, through you, Senator Hammond. Section 15, takes a suitable work. States are generally allowed, take into account some factors that are laid out in federal guidance, but the definition of suitable work and what constitutes suitable work or not is usually a state discretion. And in terms of the mechanics, suitable work, that determination will be made by a claims examiner or adjudicator.
Okay, so adjudicator who works for Dieter. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Senator Gukicchia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I expected something more, something different out of this bill, and so I don't want to be repetitious, but I like so many of the rest of you have received hundreds, if not more, calls about people that haven't had their claims either handled, satisfied, partial payment, or suspended. So I'm just curious, we know we've got thousands of claims out there pending, and we know we've got millions of dollars that have been paid out in fraudulent claims. First and foremost, I want to know, is there any way that the federal government can come back and, or will they audit how those claims were paid? You know, we're talking PUA dollars. How many actual dollars did we spend there? Let's start with those.
This is Kimberly Goff for the record, to the Senator. Yes, to your question, the federal government will come and audit us. They will determine what that total dollar amount of fraud has been paid out, and they will have expectations and measures. We've already received a subpoena from the Office of the Inspector General to review the universe of data sets that they're using to detect fraud and follow up on. We are actively working with federal and state and local law enforcement on a task force, the COVID fraud task force. So we fully expect to be audited, and we fully expect them to find fraudulent payments just based on the sheer volume. The state has now reached approximately a million filings between pandemic unemployment assistance and standard unemployment. So with a population of approaching 4 million, that means more than a quarter or a third of all the state's residents are in some form or another claiming a benefit. So yes, we expect there to be significant fraud findings. I don't know that any state is escaping that situation currently. And as far as funding for that, we do know that there's been discussions at the federal delegation level if they pass something like the HEROES Act or something other for carve-out funding specifically for fraud and integrity program work. Currently, it's funded through our standard grant and the additional above-base funding grants that we receive. It's just a component of the standard administrative grant. We don't get a separate, like appropriation from the federal government for that work currently. So that's the current methodology. So I hope that answers your questions.
Well, and it prompts some more. I really thank you. But again, just the numbers, you're talking about a million claims, half of them, approximately 500,000 of them being PUA. And I thought you said in, to my colleague from Southern Nevada, that about half those claims would be fraudulent. I mean, are we talking 250,000 fraudulent claims?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record, to the Senator. We don't know the total number. We do know that the percentage of fraudulent claims in the pandemic unemployment assistance that have been filed is significantly higher than traditional unemployment, based on what we're looking at today. I don't have exacting numbers, but if I believe correctly, Senator Hardy asked me, is it 100% or no percent, or is it somewhere in the middle? And I stated the middle. But to say what the percentage in the middle is, I can't be certain at this point because we have ongoing investigations on large groups of claims in both programs. So it's hard for me to give you an actual percentage, but is it possible it could be 200,000 claims? It is possible, based on the volume we're seeing. Anything is possible.
I thank you, and I appreciate your honesty on that. I guess, you know, I look at this bill, and we're talking about expanding it. We're betting that we're going to get a HEROES Act, or it looks like it better be a ton of new dollars, federal dollars in. How are we, and again, I've got two questions there then. Okay, if we get more money, how are we going to make sure it's going to the right places? We haven't done a very good job over the last four or five months. How are we going to make sure? What's it going to take in staffing to ramp your department up to where we can at least move it along a little quicker and with a little more surety that the money is going to the right places? And how much staff, what do you need? I'm sorry, we've got to do something different than just expand it. We're not getting it paid today.
Kimberly Goff for the record, to the Senator. I have two things that are in, kind of in progress. The first is we've requested an emergency contract with an additional vendor to provide support services. That is another contractor, similar to Alorica, but they have more experience in multiple states with adjudication work, including some fraud support work and additional communication, particularly in both UI and pandemic unemployment assistance space, so they kind of overlap. So that's one. We've committed already to potentially 50 FTE equivalents there and potentially ramping up that contract to as many as 200 FTE equivalent. But that is to be determined because that contract's in process now. I believe it's, it might be with a DAG at this point. I can't, I've lost track of the days. I apologize. But the other thing is, I am in the, I've been working all day on a staffing plan to add an additional 200 staff. And the predominant amount of staff will be placed in both call centers, north and south, for traditional unemployment assistance and pandemic unemployment assistance augmentation work on the backend. And our expansion and a pretty dramatic change on the constructs of our fraud and investigation unit because we just don't have the staffing that is needed. And so those are the two items that I have, proposals that will be going forward in the next, one is already in play, and one will be going in the next couple of days to the Governor's Finance Office for review.
All right, thank you, and I'm not going to belabor it. Please let us know what we can do to help, I mean, if you can, if it takes an appropriation. We've got to fix this some way, and we do appreciate your work, and we know you're trying hard, and nobody anticipated this, but I'm not too sure what we're doing in this bill with the expansion of benefits is really going to solve the problems that we, what are true problems. But I thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Severs-Ganser.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the folks at Employment Security because I know you're working really hard on all of this, and it's clear that you're under resource. I don't think anyone could have anticipated that we'd have unemployment rates of 30%, 25%, and 15% over the last several months. So I first want to go to the section that talks about the proposed regs and going through the Legislative Commission. And it looks, it reads to me that you will have to send proposed regs to the, first to the Department of Labor, actually, maybe that's a question. Do they go to the Department of Labor first? Because everything in this bill is set up through regulation is how it appears. So do you go through the Department of Labor to see if it's conforming first, and then will they go to the Legislative Commission?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record, to the Senator. Yes, we would always take any proposed regulation or statutory changes and submit that to the Department of Labor to ensure that there is conformity with federal law and the regulation and guidance we're receiving. Currently, with this special session situation, they're occurring simultaneously. So, but under normal course, we would draft the language, submit it, and then send it off to the Department of Labor to give us a conformity ruling on that so we could make adjustments, make sure we were not in a cross-conformity situation with federal law and regulation.
Thank you. Then I'm looking at Section 3, Number 1, and there's an "and." It says, "It's going to go to the Legislative Commission to determine whether the emergency regulation conforms to statutory authority." So that's the Department of Labor, I would assume, and then carries out the intent of the legislature. So when it goes, if it goes to Legislative Commission, and right now, it says they basically have 15 days in Number 4. And if they don't address it in 15 days, but they look at it later, and it's not within the legislative intent, then what happens? I mean, if it's taken up after the 15 days when it's assumed that, because maybe the Legislative Commission wasn't able to get together, but it doesn't meet the legislative intent, what happens? meet the legislative intent, what happens then? So I'm looking at, uh, section three, number four. It talks about a 15 day period and if the Legislative Commission hasn't approved it under, uh, I think it's B maybe, that it automatically moves forward. But I know sometimes a Legislative Commission can't meet. And so this is set up similarly to emergency regs, but it's not because there's an automatic after 15 days. And sometimes a Legislative Commission looks at things outside of the 15 days and they may reject something that was considered an emergency reg.
Uh, this is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator's question. I see where you're reading and I do not have an answer for that.
Okay, thank you. I, I understand this is brand new to all of us. We just received this bill. Okay, let's go on to section four. Section four is the one and a half times. So you're still deemed unemployed if you, if you make one and a half times the weekly benefit amount. Uh, so a few things. So is the benefit amount, the state's benefit amount, is that the benchmark? So say it was $200 or is it the, the state's benefit plus the enhancement, which right now is $600? So what's the benchmark for the one, 1.5 times?
Uh, this is Dave Schmidt for the record. That would be, uh, the individual's, uh, weekly benefit amount.
So the state's level of benefit amount, not the enhancement?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. And then, um, when, when I looked at section four, eight, nine, 10, it sounded like part of the reasons for doing this was to sort of clear up some of the outstanding issues where folks haven't been able to get unemployment benefits. And they're, and it, Ford's a little bit different, but the rest of them, it's been on hold. So my question is, are those retroactive? So it sound like you wanted to clear this up, but I don't read that these are retroactive, but I might be missing it. So is it going to help the folks who are in the queue right now and, and facing sort of putting, being put in a certain bucket because maybe they have vacation pay that they're using or severance pay or, or pay time off?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I mean, you've got pending, uh, when you've got pending issues, that means they have not been adjudicated. So, uh, effective the date of the bill, uh, the folks at ESD, uh, would have to take into account the new provisions and then, and then process those claims. So essentially, um, for those pending issues, they would take into account the new regulations that we promulgate. So I hope that answers your question.
So, so just to dig a little deeper, usually when we pass legislation, it's not retroactive unless we say that it's retroactive or something like this. So if you, you put a date on here that it's effective as of March 18th, I think they could go back and adjudicate using the new rules of engagement. But I, I guess I'd like the division to answer that question as far as whether they can go back retroactively if this bill doesn't specifically state that they can go back retroactively.
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. Um, that is correct. Um, we would, what we would be looking at is a per week certification. So if the bill was made effective this week, we would take prior weeks, um, out and current and future weeks would be in to conform to this. That's, that's the way it's written, I believe.
So the, the 150%, I think is, has the same issues. The 150%, the pay time off, the severance, the vacation, that only applies going forward. So everybody who's sitting in the queue because they, they've, um, got an outstanding question or, or issue related to any of those things still remains there. Those don't, those do not get cleared up by this.
Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator's question. Uh, yes, ma'am. This would, uh, essentially those that are in the queue already and being adjudicated now, um, for weeks that have passed would be based on the, the old language and anything current or going forward would be the new methodology and language.
Thank, thank you for the clarification on that. And then thinking about the reason we're here for this bill is because we are facing extraordinarily high unemployment rates. And I know there's some triggers for extended benefits, the, um, for the unemployment in the PUA. But is there a sunset for these, these cases where there's vacation, severance and so forth? Does any of that sunset? And does the 150 times or the 1.5 times sunset at all when we aren't in an emergency, when we're not facing a pandemic and extremely high unemployment rates?
Madam Chair, to the Senator Ganser, the 1.5 weekly benefit amount does not sunset currently. Um, it is, it is something that you all, the, the theory behind that 1.5 is to get us through the next regular session. Um, obviously legislators could, uh, could look at the impact of that 1.5 increase, um, in February. It's intended to at least get us, uh, through the next several months in, in hopes that we're going to get an extension, uh, even at a reduced benefit amount of the FPOG if it's 200 or $300. The provisions related to deductible income, those have to be waived by regulation. So it's not, it's not that we're weighting them all straight out, uh, in the statute. They'll have to be waived by regulation. Um, and certainly those regulations will, um, we intend to do that by emergency regulation and those run for, uh, 20 days at a time, um, but with the option to be able to do it again.
Um, thank you. And, and that makes some sense as far as, you know, using the regulations because I would imagine the regulation should be only good during this time of emergency and pandemic. Um, I, I think I heard on the record that during the near term, the 1.5, one and a half times, section four was going to cost about $30 million. Um, and I don't remember if that was through the end of the year. So that might be something, if we have to go back on the retroactive, if this has to be amended at all, or if you choose to amend it at all, you may want to consider also sunsetting that because I think it's reasonable to go to a session and maybe extend something, but to leave something permanently, um, and not have a sunset is, is, I'm not sure we want to do that because it's extremely expensive and it, there is an incentive. It can be viewed as creating an incentive to be unemployed or receive benefits while still making one and a half times whatever your benefit is. So we, we may want to look at section four. Moving to section 12, 12, page 25, the language is, is very broad. Um, it talks about the administrator made by regulations, suspend, modify, amend, waive, on, you know, so forth, this, anything in this section. Can you give some examples of, of what would be suspended, modified, amended or waived in, in that section? You know what? And I think that's the section, that was the, sort of the hold harmless as far as where you move within your rating versus the, the, the total rate.
Madam Chair, to the Senator Ganser.
Uh huh.
And the reason why we want to put that, uh, there and do it by regulation and, uh, is because the Department of Labor could say, you know, you have to, you have to, um, you have to, for example, hold them harmless, hold them harmless for this period of time or for this period of people. It's an ongoing, uh, it's an ongoing conversation with the Department of Labor. They, uh, we could see them, um, change the requirements and we just want to be ready to be able to do that.
Okay. And it is by regulation. So again, that sounds like it's got to go through the Department of Labor if you, if you end up doing anything like that. Um, and then the question was asked a number of times, what you need to help out? And I, and I think we really need to consider that as a body. Sounds like you have a plan for additional 50 full-time equivalents and then maybe another 200 staff for the call center. I, I recently remember seeing or reading an article when you were able to get a contract with a call center, but it sound like the folks at the call center actually couldn't do anything. They could respond and tell people that they needed to, to provide information, but they couldn't actually go online and input information to make an adjustment and to make a claim go forward. If you add people, are you going to be able to, um, help people receive their benefits sooner? And I, and I think maybe, maybe you can because this is coupled with, you can receive information electronically. So will that help you expedite? And can the people who you hire help with clearing claims as well as the fraud?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. Uh, yes, ma'am, that is the intent. We're trying to hire, um, both state staff, um, that we know will be needed just because of the, this traditional state workload that we expect to be going forward in the next few years. Uh, fraud, uh, cases typically, uh, last much longer and into a number of years potentially compared to a standard claim life, which, uh, currently would be approximately a year if all benefits were exercised. Um, so we intend to hire for both, uh, traditional unemployment and pandemic unemployment assistance. And then the additional contract, um, that you're describing with the external vendor, yes, we're trying to get a contractor who can provide some additional augmentation. Uh, we have launched the appeals module in PUA and some other, um, components that are coming up that we will need some additional staffing that have some additional, um, capacity and capabilities that we don't currently have. So it's, it's envisioned for, for both systems. And ultimately the idea is to speed things up, yes.
Thank you, because I know that's been one of the problems is that everything's been by mail, not, and not electronically. So it's, it's difficult to be able to respond and then augment whatever you have in your database. Have you been able to estimate what the overall rate increase will be for, um, because of the, the claims? And I, and I know, again, you're trying to hold harmless within the different rate structure, but like overall, um, do we, we're going to run out of, out of our reserves pretty quickly and we're going to be borrowing from the Fed. So have you anticipated what that might look like, how much that may cost?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator's question. Um, currently the CARES Act provisions allow for us to borrow at a 0% interest rate through the end of this year. Um, as Chief Economist Schmidt mentioned, uh, we expect to expend our trust fund, um, early September, late August, sometime in there. Um, we don't have receipts yet for the last, uh, um, collection of tax. So we're kind of awaiting that. Um, and that's traditionally the timing that we would, uh, convene the Employment Security Council to do the small business workshop. And then, um, the next step would be.
Okay.
The next step would be, uh, to, uh, convene the council and make a rate setting recommendation. They would make the rate, rate setting recommendation to me. And then we would have to adopt that into, um, through the Legislative Commission. That is how the process exists now.
Thank you. And, you know, again, I want to thank you for your work and I'm really hopeful that we can get resources to you because we want people in the state, the families who are eligible to be able to get their benefits. And, um, I, again, I know we couldn't have, not have expected the 30% or so unemployment rates that we face. So, so thank you for your efforts and, and for all those families out there. I know, I mean, we're working on it. It's very difficult and hopefully we can get some resources, um, to allow folks to get their benefits. Thank you.
Senator Hanson.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Actually, most of my questions have been answered. The only one that, well, a couple actually, um, maybe Mr. said I didn't catch it if I did. What's the estimated amount that we paid out since the COVID crisis has hit? I mean, what's the total dollars we're looking at here? I've heard estimates of four to $5 billion and, I don't know, do you guys have some fairly accurate number?
Uh, this is David Schmidt again for the record. Uh, I, I believe the number that we used at our, our press conference last Friday was about $6.2 billion across all of the different programs. Uh, that includes both regular unemployment insurance as well as the federal extensions. Uh, and for comparison, uh, that's about the total that we paid out in 2009, 2010, 2011 and 2012, uh, across all of the, the programs that were available at that time.
So the, the four years you just mentioned, is that 6.2 per year? Or is that in that total four-year window?
Uh, Senator, that's, uh, the total over those full four years.
Oh, so you guys, so we've already paid out in this brief window as much as we paid out in a four-year window. That's, that's flat spooky. Um, the other question then is if you're estimating 50% fraudulent claims we paid out potentially over $3 billion? That's a, I know you guys kind of seemed like you kind of arbitrarily grabbed that 50% number when my colleague gave you the one to 100 ratio. But regardless, that's a, that's a frightening amount of money that potentially is, uh, in the fraud category. Um, the other quick question I had on this whole bill, and that is the issues that we sort of anticipated were to deal more with the, the backlog and the fraud issues. Did you guys actually have any input in this bill? I don't get the impression you're really that, uh, familiar with the bill itself.
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator's question. Um, the version that you're looking at right now, we, uh, we saw this afternoon at 3:30. Um, there have been like, I believe, five different drafts. So we've had some input, yes, um, but they've been varying drafts. So I, I don't, I don't know how to answer your question exactly.
Actually.
But we, um.
You just did, actually. Thank you. That, that was kind of, I mean, that's just the impression I'm getting from the, from the hearing. If you got it at 3:30, that makes a lot of sense why there's so, so many pauses and so forth between you can answer some of the questions. Uh, the last thing is, is there anything in this bill or missing in the bill that, because to, to us, I think, at least for me, the, the enormous issue which everybody's touched on, and that is the backlog of legitimate cases that are not being met. Is there anything in the, in this bill that actually is specific to address your staffing needs and the investigation and internal investigation needs that you guys clearly have, you know, 6.2 billion and a half potentially has been paid out fraudulently? You need some help.
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. Um, we don't have anything in this specific bill that addresses, um, like administration for staffing or anything like that. Um, that submission that I'm going to be making to the governor's, um, office that is forthcoming, um, would be envisioned, would be paid with our administrative dollars that we have coming in, um, or that, that's traditionally how it's funded. But no, there's nothing in this specific bill that carves out additional staffing.
Okay, well, thank you. Just want you to know too, you know, I mean, you guys really got thrown into an exceptionally difficult situation and I feel for you and honestly, uh, we want to help you because, you know, we're in the same boat in the sense that we have suddenly got a huge number of emails and people who have very legitimate needs for money and, uh, are unemployed. So we want to help. We're not here just to criticize. So I, I, I don't want you to get the impression that we're, you know, trying to make you look bad because we're not. What we're really trying to do is help you solve a very, very difficult situation for our constituents and, and for the state government. So thank you. Keep up the good work. Do the best you can and, uh, hopefully we can, before the special session ends, uh, give you some really seriously needed relief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Spearman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I just have some really, I guess, kind of boneheaded questions. Uh, first of all, I, I appreciate the job that you all are doing because it's, it's one of make more bricks without a whole lot of hay. So what kind of technology was in place before the pandemic started that you were able to use to help, um, you right the ship the first couple of months?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator's question. Um, we, our existing, um, traditional unemployment insurance system was upgraded and launched in 2013, Labor Day 2013. Um, so it was, as unemployment insurance systems go, um, are more modern than some of the states. Um, we immediately after the passage of the CARES Act, um, provisions on March 28th, um, we started, um, recoding the system to incorporate, um, the provisions of the act for section 2102, oh, four and oh, six, I think it was at this point, um, included but all. 04, and 06, I think it was at this point, included all the extended benefits, as well as some additional provisions. Were needed, obviously, for the pandemic unemployment assistance. We purchased on an emergency contract a module to our existing workforce system in order to stand up that system, and that system went live in May because we did not have the resources to both code the new program, which was based on disaster unemployment assistance in our existing unemployment insurance system, simultaneously with the CARES Act provisions that we were coding in the unemployment system. So, we did both of those in the same timeframe. We've added additional phone system, which we're continuing to build out for the agency. The last component of that system will be probably the call centers because they are the most complicated, and we have interactive voice response system that is pretty complicated in order to provide that relief to calls, claimants making calls, and to our staff. We're also looking at additional work that we're currently working on that was already envisioned with appropriation from the last biennium appropriation to translate the unemployment insurance, traditional unemployment insurance system, UINV, into Spanish. That project is live and moving forward, and we predict that that will be somewhere between October and December live for our Spanish-speaking constituency to engage in a fully Spanish site. We've also done a myriad of security projects in order to add additional security to our systems, and we continue to work with any changes or any updates that we receive on guidance from the Department of Labor. So, those are the largest, like, big technology investments and projects we've been working on throughout the pandemic that have gone live, most of them within the first 60 days, 60, 90 days of the pandemic.
So, recoding, when you start off with 200 and then extended benefit goes to 600, how many hours or days would that take? Did that take? And are you still there now? And the reason I'm asking is because there, like everybody else in this chamber, I've gotten a lot of emails and, you know, emails, mothers saying they have four kids and they don't have money to pay their rent, or they don't have money for food or something like that. So, the recoding piece seems like it was a little bit laborious. Is that done manually? Is it done via technology, a combination of the two? And just help me understand, okay, because I don't know anything about what system, the kind of system that you have.
To the Senator, this is Kimberly Goff for the record. Yes, the, our traditional unemployment insurance system required recoding. That required us to, you know, resource and conscript several other staff that had left our agency, that had gone to other state agencies, and bring back additional resources to help with that effort. That code is complicated, and it is a laborious process to recode, and it depends on the component of the code that has to be reworked, for lack of a better term. So, for example, pandemic, federal pandemic unemployment compensation, or the additional $600, was the first piece of coding that we implemented and launched. We were able to do that within, I believe it was 10 to 14 days or something after the Act was passed. We focused on that immediately because we knew that relief was a huge benefit to Nevadans, and it was necessary. And we also knew that pandemic unemployment, the provision for the extended benefits, pandemic employment
Emergency.
Emergency unemployment compensation, sorry. I'm getting a little rummy. I apologize. And the state extended benefits weren't going to kick in as quickly. So, we focused on the federal pandemic unemployment compensation, $600 first. Two weeks, we had to retroactively go back and pay everybody. That took us another week or so because the files were so large and the files to the banks were so large that it took, I think, the first time we tried to launch the code and payback weeks, it took us 26 hours to generate the pay file to the bank because it was so large. So, it is a laborious process. And that was also one of the reasons why we picked a vendor to stand up pandemic unemployment assistance because we knew we couldn't do it in the timeframe. It's just physically almost an impossibility. And even at that, it took a number of weeks to get live. It's a really complicated process. Now, if there is a provision passed by the federal government, if the changes from the $600 for the federal pandemic unemployment compensation is a reduction, let's say, from $600 to $300 to change that code because we've already done it, will probably be faster than if the federal government passes a provision that says you must make a calculation against an individual claimant's weekly benefit amount at a certain percentage, say, 75%. So, that code, we have not worked through, and we don't have an estimate. It could take a couple of months. It just, it depends on the complication of the calculations required. But the straight change, if it's a solid dollar amount from $600 to, say, $300, would probably be pretty rapid.
So, there's absolutely no technology that would assist you, anything in AI or something like that that would assist you in making those computations and being able to recode faster than a couple of months? Because it seems to me, if it does come back, as you say, you're going to have people who, some of whom filed in March, and they may not see a check until January. So, is there anything technologically that we can help you all get that will cut that time down? Because it's, you know, it may only be two weeks before the person who has $1 left and no gas in their car, and they've got two slices of bread, the only is a big deal.
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. I don't know that I can answer that question at this point because we're, so much of it is dependent on what the passage of any potential legislation comes from the federal government. Do I believe that there is artificial intelligence technology that could help us do that and complete that? I would have to defer to our chief information officer, but I would seriously doubt that. I think it's man-hours and staffing in order to do that work, just because of the way the system was built out. The newer system we're using for pandemic unemployment assistance, that may be something that that vendor could execute in a much more rapid fashion because that's brand-new technology that we're using. So, I would hate to promise something for either system without doing some analysis of what would be involved there. But my sense from the conversations, in order to speed up in our traditional unemployment system with some sort of AI and code against that, I don't believe that would even be possible.
So, if we have, let's say, 2 million people here, but a state like Texas has 10 million people, and I don't want to make another number. So, they would have the same issue with five times the number of people on their unemployment, that they wouldn't be able to, they would not be able to handle that or get that done for another couple of months?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. It depends on the state's system. Not all of the states, we're not on a federalized system. That's one thing. So, each state has their own unemployment system. And so, without knowing the technologies of all the states, I wouldn't be able to answer, like, who would be successful rapidly and who wouldn't. But I do know that there are states who have done remodelingations in the last couple of years, specifically Idaho. They micro-apped their system, and they may be able to deploy code faster than what we could. Their system is built out in a .net structure, which ours is not. So, when you're talking UI system to UI system from state to state, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. It's, so, it's hard to say if every state would. I do know that there were a number of states on our national call that we had recently that said, in some cases, many of them indicated it could be as late as December, if it was a calculation-based change and not a straight, flat amount. But I don't want to speak for other states.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I wasn't really wanting you to do that. I just was trying to see if there's anything out there that we don't know of that would help you all do what you do. So, on another technology question, we've talked about call centers, and I think I heard, is it 2,200 new employees? Are they going to be, and when I say, when I think call center, I think of a huge box and people are sitting there, and they've got earphones on and microphone, and they answer calls, and then just kind of say, you know, let me take your information. Or will you have 200, 2,200 new employees coming in and working under a cloud phone technology? Are we doing the, are we still doing the old-fashioned way in terms of from phone to person to computer, computer to person to phone? Or are we looking at a cloud system? And when I say that, I'm thinking about, most of the companies today, their call center means that they've got people in a place where there is cloud service. I know many of the agencies in the federal government have gone to cloud-based services, the VA, Social Security Administration, you know. So, is there a way, if we don't have the cloud system as part of our phone, the cloud as part of our phone system, then what does it take to get that? And the other benefit that I think would happen from a cloud-based phone system, I think it would allow people to work from home and not have to be in a building or cubicles. And I say that because a couple of weeks ago, it was reported that the interim director left because of safety issues. So, if people are not in a building location, but they're allowed to work from home because they have the cloud, it seems to me that that would number one, save money. But the other thing it would do, it would help you to be more efficient. And I don't know, so I'm just asking, okay?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. Yes, ma'am, we actually already have a project in, underway to replace the state call center phone system. It is a cloud-based phone system, and we do believe that it will be able to scale operations quickly. But you do have to have staff in order to staff that and scale that. So, we are already working toward that, and we expect that full complement of capabilities by the end of this year. So, we are already working towards that as far as a phone system. The integration with the computer system and everything else, we are also working through that. We want to be able to provide that efficiency to staff. So, as people come into that new phone system, they can provide information. We can consume that information in a fast method instead of having to have an individual repeat those answers, for example, over the phone to staff. So, we are building in those efficiencies within the system. Additionally, you're correct. With the current old phone system, our phone system is more than 20 years old. We do not have the capability to have staff work remotely and connect to that phone system to provide those services, as you say, in a safer environment, social distance from each other beyond, you know, the cubicle walls that are six feet high in some cases in some of the areas of the call centers. So, we do recognize that. We've been working on that project. It was, it took, I want to say, a couple of months to get off the ground. At the beginning of the pandemic, we did have to get an emergency contract approved, but we are working towards that, and we recognize that that ability to scale is what is necessary in order to provide better service to Nevadans and for our staff to have that ability to work remotely.
Madam Chair, just a couple more questions. The first one is, are some of the checks being delayed because there may be outstanding child support or some other monetary payment that has not been made by the person who's expecting their unemployment check?
This is Kimberly Goff to the Senator, your question. We do offset child support payments in accordance with law in our traditional unemployment system. We are currently working on that technology for the pandemic unemployment assistance to build out the interface to collect those dollars in accordance with the CARES Act requirements. So, yes, there would be collection, but that is based on the court order. So, if the court order says you must collect $101.78 a week, that is what we are doing currently.
So, last question. If, we talked earlier about some fraud, and if someone was supposed to get a check, and that money was fraudulently diverted to someone else, if you can't get that money back, what happens to the person who was expecting it? Do they, are they reimbursed, or do they have to wait?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the Senator. That scenario that you just described is something we have seen in this pandemic. And yes, because we have to validate the identity of the person requesting the funds and determine that the funds already paid out were not duplicative to an individual group, there is a period of waiting, yes. And we do need staffing for our integrity unit, and that is part of the ask for the upcoming positions because we definitely need more staff in that regard. But there's not a very streamlined, simple way to just say, yes, this is that same person. There are steps that we must take in order to verify identity and ensure that we are paying the correct person. And we know that that occurs, and it has occurred in the past, and it continues to occur in the current situation.
Thank you. And I just want to say again, I appreciate all the work that you all are doing. More bricks with less hay. My concern, and if there's something out there and you find it out later, if you could just let me know, and I'd really like to know what we can do as a legislature. How can we help you all acquire whatever technology that you need? A phone system that's 20 years old is, when you consider technology innovation today, that phone system is really 100 years old because it doesn't do near as much as a phone system that would have been installed five years ago. Does that make sense to you? So, how can we help you acquire the technological accoutrements that you need so that people are not waiting three, four, five months? I mean, I have constituents that filed in March and didn't receive anything until June, some, I'm sorry, yeah, March and didn't receive anything until June, and then some who filed in March and received a letter that said, basically, we've got your claim, and we haven't decided what to do with it yet. So, what can we do? Just think about it. You don't have to answer it now, but what, there's got to be something that we can do to help you acquire the technological accoutrements that will help you get your work done more effectively and efficiently. Thank you so much for your service. Really do appreciate it. Really do appreciate it.
Kimberly Gah for the record to the Senator's question. We appreciate that and I'm sure there will be a request to the Interim Finance Committee for additional revenues that we may be needing to bring in from appropriations from the federal government and probably contracts and other things as we go forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going, I know that there are lots of questions among many of us in this body to talk about unemployment generally and how we can make sure our constituents get monies that in many cases they are desperately owed. But I think it's important to go back to the bill. And let's, I have questions specifically on Section 15, which deals with the good cause language. And Mr. Morales, could you talk a bit about, what I understand, our clear Department of Labor guidelines that allow for states to determine if and when individuals are affected by COVID, COVID-19, either in their household because they are caring for someone with a virus or because they are themselves affected by the virus but get called back to work, what should happen in those situations? It's my understanding that multiple states, including Texas, North Carolina, Washington State, New York, California, Colorado, among others, have issued guidelines on this question. And what Section 15 does is give our state the ability to join that group by creating the regulations as to what should happen if an individual is affected, directly affected by COVID-19 and not able to return to work at the time that they are called back to work. Could you speak to this section and how you believe this will be enacted in our state, Mr. Morales?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Cancela, yeah, you're right. I mean, what Section 15 does, it lays the groundwork and it provides some guidance for what those rules should be. I want to be clear that good cause is an area of state discretion. So long as we're within the confines of federal law, we're going to be fine here, especially because the, whatever regulation we promulgate will have to be submitted to the Department of Labor. But our state already identifies good cause to include reasons related to the job itself, but also to personal reasons, as the Department of Labor calls it. We don't restrict ourselves to only specifically good cause related to work. So how this will work, as Ms. Gah stated earlier, we're going to promulgate a regulation that will be modeled based off this statute. And we'll look at other states and their best practices, what they've been including. We'll make sure that it conforms with federal guidance and we'll submit it to the Department of Labor for review. And then we will then go through the state process. But, you know, going back to as early as April, the Department of Labor has put out guidance and different notices to states, asking them to, and allowing them to waive their good cause provisions as to be able to help people navigate these difficult times, as they have also allowed states to waive the work search requirement, the one-week waiting period and other areas of law. And so that's generally how this will work. And you're correct, this is, we're not the first state to do this. Texas, this language is actually modeled after Texas and what they've already enacted there.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up, Madam Chair. It's been my understanding that in some states, and I'm looking at Washington State, for example, where employers are able to report employees that they believe are not returning to work for potentially fraudulent reasons and really making sure that both employers and employees have a line of communication on this question. Do you believe that that's the direction our state should go in on this, making sure that both employers and employees are part of the policy?
Yes, that's correct. We obviously want to continue to protect the integrity of the system. But I think it's important to note that, you know, folks want to get back to work and they want to keep their job. And really what this is intended to do is to allow folks to not have to choose between their job or their life. And so, you know, the intent, as you mentioned, is to also allow communication with employers to be able to submit, you know, names of folks that have voluntarily, you know, just chosen not to go back. But quite frankly, I don't think that's going to be the majority of the cases that we're talking about here.
Thank you. And just one final question. In Section 15, Sub 5, it speaks to a person caring for a child who's unable to attend school or a childcare facility because of COVID-19. In the context of this section, it appears to me that this would be when a child is unable to attend school, either because they are quarantining because of COVID-19 or they may be themselves actually sick with COVID-19. This would not create some blanket prescription whereby, because students aren't able to attend a physical building of school but are doing distance learning, that that individual caring for them would then not go back to work. This would allow for the idea that we will largely be doing distance learning and that students will be home from school. Is that your understanding of this language?
That's generally the intent. The specific regulation that will prescribe the exact scenarios will be submitted to the Department of Labor, but that's generally the intent, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is about the future. The UI system is, I would say antiquated at best. What are the plans, if any, to put us in a better position moving forward? I understand that this time around, we had no idea that a pandemic could happen and unemployment would shoot up to, you know, levels that we haven't seen before, but ideally now we know a bit better. Is there a five-year plan to improve unemployment, improve the website? You've talked a little bit about improving the phone systems and bringing in vendors, but what's the long-term picture to make sure that we don't end up in a place like this again?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Harris. That's a very good point. Currently, the governor's office is working with Dieter. We've already requested some proposals from vendors that can give us an idea of what it would cost to modernize the UI interface. There are some great solutions out there that conform with more modern IT standards, for example, cloud-based, low-coding environments, interactive interfaces. And so we're exploring all those options. We're looking to see what it would take. Obviously, modernizing, the question that we get a lot is, why don't you just knock it down and start all over? But the reality is that a true modernization that includes tax, benefits and appeals could take anywhere from 24, 36-plus months. So we're already exploring all those options because I agree, I think that we need to take this pandemic as all the lessons learned from the pandemic and really get us into a spot where we're, you know, we're future-proof, at least for the foreseeable.
Thank you. It's good to know that you guys are thinking about the future and what else might need to be done in order to prevent a similar scenario. Are there states that are, you know, pre-pandemic or post-pandemic, however, doing this really well? Is there a best state model that we can copy? Is there a 36-month plan? Yeah, I guess that's my question.
Sure. Madam Chair, through you to Senator Harris. I think there's a lot of good practices out there. We're going to be looking at a lot of states who have done this well, pre-pandemic, during pandemic, and who will be doing this post-pandemic. And really, the plan is to definitely put together a plan over the next several years to modernize the system and also be able to integrate other tools out there, like, as Ms. Gah mentioned, 8x8, another third-party software that will make the user experience a lot better. But the reality is that all the states dealt with this. It was a very sudden surge in claims. And this pandemic will leave behind a lot of lessons learned. We'll definitely be looking at other states and seeing how their systems did.
Okay, thank you so much. I think you all are hearing that you've got some partners here in that effort in the legislature and we look forward to helping you all in that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to lend my voice to the chorus. You guys have been handed a massive undertaking and you seem to be rolling with it quite well and we stand ready to help as we can. I wanted first, if I could, Ms. Gah, just review a couple of things, make sure I got them. We're talking about potentially hundreds of thousands of fraudulent claims, but how many Nevadans have had their payments delayed?
This is David Schmidt for the record. Within the traditional unemployment insurance program, there's a couple of different ways that we can measure this. In our most recent week, we had, I believe, approximately 20,000 claims where a weekly claim was filed but payment was held up on some sort of issue. Overall, for those current claims that are being filed, we're paying about 90% of those claims, which is really on track with our historical average, where there's large numbers. It's in part because there's a large number of claims in the system. Looking at initial applications coming into the system, we tend to be between about 40 and 60% of those applications ending up being paid. And so that we're paying about 250,000 weekly claims right now out of a population of about 500,000 initial claims puts us kind of in that same benchmark as well. For the pandemic unemployment assistance program, that program has seen, I believe, through last Friday, about 382,000 claims. Currently, we have about 120,000 of those claims that have actually been paid. A number of claims are still being held for review for any issues or potential fraud flags on those claims. And so one of the things that is taking place is that prior to payment, claims that appear to be potentially fraudulent, when we can identify those do get held to try to resolve those issues before the money starts going out the door.
Right. And I appreciate that. And I'm a lawyer, so I couldn't do the math that fast, but I think what you were saying was, out of the 500,000 claims, and I believe that's on the standard unemployment, about 40% were delayed. And then, do I understand that a little more than half of the PUA claims were delayed and some of those remain outstanding?
Senator, I believe at present, we have significantly less than 40% of claims being delayed earlier in the pandemic. The delays for adjudication on the share of those claims was much higher, but that has come down as we continue to be working through the backlog. I don't think I could put a firm percentage on it right now off the top of my head.
Sure, sure. And I'm just trying to get a kind of an order of magnitude understanding of what's left because ultimately, it sounds like, and I think it was Mr. Morales said, we're looking at 36 months to work through the backlog. Maybe I misunderstood that. And currently, how many adjudicators, and I don't know what that means in a legal sense, that's a hearing master or a referee at a department, but how many, well, first, who's doing the adjudications and how many of them are there?
This is Kimberly Gah for the record to the Senator's question. So we have a couple groups that traditionally are not considered adjudicators adjudicating right now. We took the whole entire division and so we basically moved many of our workforce staff who either had unemployment insurance experience or were doing some sort of eligibility work on the workforce side of the house and kind of conscripted them over to support unemployment insurance. So we pulled them all in and they are also augmenting the staff. So prior to the pandemic, I'm trying to remember the numbers, we probably had 45 or so adjudicators and we've probably tripled that in some capacity or other, if you take into consideration those we've hired plus those we've brought in from the workforce side of the house to augment that staff. Same or similar to the claims examiner stuff, those folks on the phone taking the calls, walking people through the claims process, answering informational questions and so on, as is similar. We conscripted people in from the workforce side of the house to augment that staff and then we've been adding staff as we've been going. I think we, last count, we were at 108 hires as of, I don't know, the last pay period out of 133 that we were already in the process of hiring. Plus, we also have the Call Center for Pandemic Unemployment Assistance, which is the contract call center. They started out with 100 FTE equivalents and now have ramped up to more than 200 in order to support that workload. And then they also have 35 adjudicators that are providing the lowest level work of adjudication. And to your question about what an adjudicator is, that is a person making an eligibility determination for both financial eligibility for the program and also eligibility for the program construct. So for pandemic unemployment assistance is, have you had a reduction of work for one of the related COVID reasons as outlined in the CARES Act? That's the eligibility determination. They look through the paperwork that's been submitted by the claimant and make that decision on unemployment insurance sign. It's a lot more complicated than that. It's what is the reason for your separation? They conduct an interview with both the claimant and the employer potentially to resolve conflicts of information there. If the employer says they were fired but the claimant says they quit, for example, that would be an example of whether, as far as for hearings, that would be the appeals process that you were kind of alluding to. And those would be, that process would be invoked after an initial eligibility determination was made and a potential claimant or an employer in traditional unemployment felt that the decision was wrong and so they were appealing that decision. That's kind of the process.
All right. I appreciate that. So we're talking about 150 to 200, roughly, people doing the adjudications and that's in addition to those that are just simply taking the calls and then the appeals process. And how many hearing masters or referees or whomever is doing the And how many hearing masters or referees or whomever is doing the appeals? How many of those do we have? And how many of those, how many claims have been appealed?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator's question. We have about 20 staff appeals referees. We are bringing on both contract staff and part-time appeals referees to deal with the workload that we're expecting for Pandemic Unemployment Assistance appeals. I do know that as of last week, I believe, we had 2,000 appeal requests in Pandemic Unemployment Assistance. And off the top of my head, I can't tell you how many pending appeals are in standard unemployment. I did not look up those numbers, but I'm happy to provide updated staffing numbers and appeals numbers to the body. If you would like me to just get that over to LCB staff, I can do that.
Well, I mean, we're not given the opportunity to make amendments here, so I don't know that that's necessary, except to the extent that we should probably understand how many people we're talking about and what the costs are going to be. And I would assume that that would go to IFC. But if we've got 2,000 appeals so far, and 20 people, you know, if we figure half an hour each, we're talking about somewhere around 100 hours or so of work. So that's, you know, a month or so. And I assume that this number will grow, particularly when the PUA appeals come on. So knowing that will help us understand how to help you staff and resolve these cases. And then you had mentioned that you have put in a request for additional staff and resources. I'm wondering if you believe that Mr. Morales is, and that's probably a bad way to ask that, because I don't want to set up a disagreement. Are you confident that you're going to be able to do this within 36 months? You'll have it all caught up, and from then on, we're not going to be looking at any more delays, other than the standard incomplete applications or discrepancies found?
This is Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator's question. 36 months, I'm not sure, not sure where that number came from. We've been resolving claim decisions at an extremely rapid pace since the start of the pandemic. We've made decisions on claims that would constitute years' worth of work in a matter of 90 days. So I don't envision the same workload that we have today still lingering 36 months from now, unless it was in some sort of appeals process, had been appealed to further appellate levels, or something to that effect, or potentially a claim that was determined as fraudulent and is being worked from a fraud investigation standpoint and further potential prosecution. But I don't believe, we envision that the workload that we have today, the 23,000 pending in standard unemployment waiting a decision, or the 176,000-plus that are, or 150,000 in Pandemic Unemployment Assistance, would be awaiting the decision that long.
All right, and I appreciate that. And the 36 months is what I thought Mr. Morales had said. Maybe I misunderstood. I've got some questions for him in just a minute. So, and that was a great segue into the resolution of the fraudulent claims. I know my law partner and I were surprised when we were notified that we were unemployed. And so I'm sure that we've got quite a bit of work to do there. I'm wondering, though, if, do we know? Well, first, how many people do you, and you may have answered this, and I've forgotten, but how many people do you currently employ in your integrity unit that investigates the frauds?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator, currently, we have less than 20.
All right. And with the additional staff, what do you anticipate, assuming that that's approved, what do you anticipate that stepping up to?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator. With the indulgence of the governor's office, I would be asking for about 50 positions.
All right, thank you. And so if we've got hundreds of thousands of fraudulent claims, and somewhere around 70 people investigating those, how long do you think it'll take to get through those claims?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator. I couldn't estimate that at this time. To be honest with you, I have no way to provide you that at this point.
Sure. I guess, let me ask it this way. In a typical fraud claim with a given investigator, how long are the, does it usually take to resolve those in an ordinary situation?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator. It depends on the, if the issue on the claim is just we're questioning somebody's identity, and we need to go through the steps to verify their identity, that can be done in a matter of days or weeks. If the issues on the claim and the information that we're receiving from law enforcement or other entities involves potentially organized rings, potentially, or cyber sophisticated kind of methodologies involved, that could take days, weeks, months, it just depends. There's no real way to describe that, because I've seen investigations take years. So it just, it depends on the complexity of the cases.
Sure, and that makes sense. I guess where I'm going with this is, and my last question for you will be, for those that have, because as has been commented on many times, we're all getting calls and emails and the like from people that are saying, "I've applied for unemployment," or "I've implied for the PUA assistance, and I'm told that I've already applied," or "I'm told that I can't get it," or sometimes they're just told that the pay date is going to be delayed. I'm assuming that those are delayed due to the fraud. And so what I'm trying to get to is, how, what do I tell them? How long are they probably going to have to wait before they get their case resolved? Do we have any idea how long that's going to be?
Kimberly Goff for the record to the senator's question. Regarding the pay date movement, that is specific to the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance system. That is a construct of the new Pandemic Unemployment Assistance technology system. One of the things we've learned as part of this pandemic is that when the file is creating the bank transfer, it preps that work, and it has to be validated by our staff. It creates a messaging in the system to the claimant saying it's in a pay status when it's actually not been paid out yet. We are working with the vendor to remedy that situation, to streamline that situation, and we've been actively working on that for a number of weeks with the vendor. But it's pretty complicated, and it also involves some conversations with the banks. So we are actively working on that problem, and we realize that that does cause confusion for claimants, because they believe if it says paid, they should be able to see that on their debit card or in their, so we are actively working on that. As far as how long we think that the potential claims that are held up due to fraud, again, a lot of it depends on the complexity of that particular claim and/or groups of claims in the case. We do, part of the contract that we're trying to get through right now is for augmented staff for contractors to help with the backlog of emails. We know between the two systems, we have more than 200,000 emails. So we are bringing on staffing just to address just that workload, because we've been trying to use about five people to try to do that workload, and it's just not, it's just not sufficient. So we are bringing that first, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I certainly feel for you, because I feel like I have that many outstanding emails on the issue as well. And thank you, I really do appreciate that. And I know it's hard to estimate, and it's probably a mistake to try to set an expectation unless we know we can meet it. But I just, I have people, constituents calling and writing, and I, telling them I don't know just doesn't seem to satisfy them, so. But you've given me, I think, some fodder for a response. So thank you very much, thank you for your effort. Mr. Morales, I think the rest of these questions are going to be for you. I started out with two pages of questions, but I'm down just to a few more. I'm looking at Section 3, where it talks about the administrator will declare the emergency, and then in Section 5, we're talking about the governor declaring the emergency. And then those lead up to Section 12, where we're talking about the administrator can suspend, well, it says, may, by regulation, suspend, modify, amend, or waive any requirement of this chapter for the duration of a state of emergency or declaration of disaster, and for any additional period of time which the emergency disaster directly affects, and goes through a few things. Since we don't have a sunset, and this is tied loosely to the governor's proclamation, how do we square Section 3 with Section 5? Can you, and it's probably just because I haven't had a chance to digest the language, but can you just walk me through briefly how the system is intended to work? Who ultimately declares the emergency? And then who lifts it? And, because as I understand, under emergency regulations, those go into effect immediately, subject to future review by the Legislative Commission. Can you kind of walk us through that process briefly?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Pickard. This is Jessica Dis from the governor's office for the record. I can answer that question for you, Senator. So the purpose behind the new language in the bill and those few sections you mentioned is, Section 5 is intended, as Mr. Morales touched on at the very top of the presentation, to provide the agency with some flexibility and nimbleness when the federal government in circumstances like this one creates new guidance or new flexibility for agencies for things that are in statute or in regulations. So we would have to, you know, make adjustments to either a regulation or a statute in order to achieve the flexibility contemplated by the federal government. That one pertains to the administrator's ability when the governor has declared a state of emergency, and it's, it is by regulation, but it is to waive, modify, or amend anything in the chapter. So because that is sort of an unusual authority as far as waiving statute and regs go, the Section 3 is a modification to the existing emergency regulation authority and process. So traditionally, when an emergency regulation is submitted by an agency, they attach to the draft emergency regulation a statement of emergency that gets signed off on by the governor before the regs are considered adopted and filed with the Secretary of State's office. So that's what that particular language means. It's just as traditionally is done with an emergency regulation, the administrator would have a statement outlining what the emergent need for the draft regulations is. And then Section 5, or excuse me, the rest of Section 3 grants the, you know, establishes a process by which the Legislative Commission has the ability to weigh in on that change. The changes are, as emergency regulations are temporary, the changes are contemplated to be temporary. So there is a permission in Section 3 that they could be renewed, but again, it would be only renewed for a specific temporary amount of time. And then to the rest of your question, Section 12 is, that language about through regulations suspending, modifying, or waiving is specific to that section, which is the employer charging rate. So for, in order to comply with the federal government's request that we grant relief to employers, that section operates as the administrator to make changes to employer charging rates so that we can be eligible for that grant that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Schmidt, but also to provide some relief to employers who, you know, through no fault of their own had to lay off employees during, because of COVID-19.
All right, thank you for that. That does make some sense. I guess where I'm coming from, though, is we've heard a lot of consternation about this sense that NRS 414 has given the governor unlimited authority, unfettered, indeed unchecked authority, without input or qualification by the legislative body. And this seems to extend that now to the administrators, which is some concern. But let me go into Section 14, if I could. We're talking about some of the exemptions. We've got a number of entities that are exempted from the requirements. We've got, of course, the governor's office doesn't, they're exempted because they already have the authority. But then we talk about higher education, gaming control board, even the cannabis compliance board is exempt from this. Why are we exempting any agency from this? Is this saying that they don't get the benefit of these expansions of authority? Or why are we exempting them?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Pickard. This is Jessica Dis from the governor's office for the record. Senator, that's pre-existing language in NRS 233B. The change that's to that section is not, I think, it's in subsection 3, and then sub A. It's in Chapter 12 of NRS for the adoption of an emergency regulation or the distribution of regulation. That's the only part of Section 14 that's new language. The rest of that is already occurring in 233B.
All right. I am just, okay. I guess I still don't understand the logic for exempting some, whether it's existing or not. All right. I want to look at Section 15. We've got, and we touched on this a little bit. If I understand correctly, if an employer can't by suitable means, and suitable is defined by the administration later, how does an employer know what is suitable if it's not defined in the law?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Pickard. Before I answer that question, I just want to clarify my, clarify, when I said 36 months, I meant that a full overhaul of the unemployment benefit could take anywhere from 24 to 36 months. I just want to clarify that for the record, that's what I was referring to.
Thank you.
In terms of, in terms of suitable work, how does an employer know that their, that the work is not suitable? I guess I'm having a little hard, hard time understanding the question, if you could just clarify.
Sure. Sure, it says, the language says, the employer, I'm sorry, let me back up. Such justifications may include without limitation that the employer cannot offer suitable means by which the person may work remotely, and medical professional has recommended that the person not return to work. So they have a doctor's note. Who is defining the suitable means? And how do employers know?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Pickard. Madam Chair, through you to Senator Picker. Again, Section 15 basically sets out a criteria and a framework for the administrator to promulgate regulations that would be more specific. Suitable work, the Department of Labor lays out certain criteria that states must consider or can consider in their determination of what constitutes suitable work, including the health, the health risk that that work poses to the person. And in our intent here is to better define that by regulation, look at what we're allowed to do by the Department of Labor standards, look at the criteria that we must use, and then promulgate a regulation to that effect.
All right, I appreciate that. I guess I just, as a recovering trial lawyer, I'm just trying to figure out how employers can protect themselves. And it sounds like we're gonna have to wait until the regs are out. But 3 is the same kind of question where we talk about unreasonable risk. We don't have any definition for unreasonable. I'm assuming then that if we don't know what suitable means are until the regs are out, we don't know what an unreasonable risk is until the regs are out. Is that accurate?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Picker, that is correct. And I want to be clear that this applies for when somebody chooses not to go back to work because there is one of these conditions. It's not gonna apply for, you know, any other, you know, toward or any of that kind of action. This is specific to this chapter and is specific to good cause in terms of unemployment.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And I apologize, I probably should have prefaced the question with that understanding. This is about people who decide they're not going back to work and what does an employer do about it? And that's where I'm going. And then we look at Sub 4 where it says, one of the reasons is the person staying home to care for a family member who is suffering from COVID-19 or subject to a prescribed period of quarantine by a medical professional. So, I'm assuming that they have a doctor's note for that. I'm assuming then that the employer has a right to ask for the doctor's note or expect that before they would, before they would be subject here?
That would, that requirement would be something that we would have to promulgate in regulation. And to the extent that the Department of Labor doesn't require that, I don't see why add that in the regulation. Again, these are not arbitrary decisions, I want to be clear about that. These are guidance. These are guidance to allow adjudicator to make determination quicker and with better consistency. Ultimately, all these cases I'm involved refusing suitable work are on a case-by-case basis and will be adjudicated.
Oh, sure. No, I appreciate that. I'm just thinking that since the employer's on the hook, if they are determined to be in the wrong, that we give enough guidance to them that they can make a proper informed decision. But moving on then to Sub 5, the person is caring for a child who is unable to attend school, which will be, I think, all 350,000 students in Clark County School District since they're not going back, it's distance only, or a childcare facility because of COVID-19. They're all out because of COVID-19. So, does this mean that every employee of mine and other employers that have kids in school, that they have to now be home with them because they can't attend school? They now are subject to this direction?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Picker. I think what, I think we're getting a little bit too into the weeds of this. We're gonna promulgate the regulations to lay out specific conditions that are in accordance with the Department of Labor. And I would not, I would not, I mean, and this goes to show why some of this language that we have in statute brings such a burdensome work for Dieter, because they're the ones that are making these determinations on a case-by-case basis. And so, I'm not gonna speculate on that specific scenario.
All right, well, I think it's really important that we get into the weeds since we're about to live by this. I think it's important for us to know what we're signing before we sign it. And to me, this is, you know, if we're talking about trying to, you know, we've only got four weeks of money left and we're trying to get through to the next session, these four, these five provisions could bankrupt the system if we don't adequately define it and give employers and the adjudicators the information they need. And if what we're saying is we're opening the door so that the regulations can include them, we're buying a pig and a poke here. I'm really concerned what this will do financially to the state. Finally, I'm looking at Section 13, Sub 1. Can you tell me why you inserted mail when everything is, we're trying to move everything to an electronic, an electronic format?
Sure, because, Madam Chair, through you to Senator Picker, Section 13, because we are allowing electronic communication except where there is a due process provision or where there is a concern for due process, you know, trying to make sure that we are not going around the current rules of civil procedure for a claimant's due process, but also in this case, it would pertain to a mail notice to the employer, because the employers also have the right to protest charging benefits against their account.
Sure, sure. Okay, that makes sense because we just got that. All right, and let's see. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. It looks like we've covered everything else. Thank you for your responses and thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Rady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am sympathetic and perhaps the word is empathetic because my email box is almost, is also full with hundreds of folks who are challenged by the current situation that we find ourselves in. And so, I appreciate the level of questions that we've received and the level of clarity that we've, we've gotten at the very detailed level. However, I think some of the prior testimony has gotten us so into the weeds that I've lost and I feel the body has lost the overall strategic direction of this bill. So, for my benefit and really for the benefit of what I think is probably gonna be one of the most watched issues that we will have heard during this special session because it is affecting so many people, I want to make sure that we have sort of the bigger picture, higher level concepts that are in the bill, what the strategy is. Because in the prior comments, I've heard this notion of that we need to act with urgency, that there are so many people out there who need help and that we as this body want to help you. But then I've also heard we must proceed with caution and we can't provide too much discretion because we're gonna have to live by this. And I don't think that we can, in this case, have our cake and eat it too. Either we're gonna give the administrator and the folks who are in a position to make decisions discretion so that they can move some of these things through more efficiently, or we're going to continue to tie their hands because we're concerned about how this gets done. So, Francis, or sorry, Mr. Morales, I want to just say this back to you and see if I'm grasping what this bill really does. So, I believe that the idea here is in Section 5, we create the ability for emergency regs to be created and to be brought to the Legislative Commission for sign-off so that in a regulatory process, which is a process that can be changed when the legislature is not in session, if it's not working or if it could be working better, we give you the power to do that. Then secondly, in Section 7, we create the statutory trigger language so that we can take advantage of what's already in the CARES Act of an additional seven weeks for benefits for all Nevadans if they qualify. And I think that there should be broad support for the concept that Nevadans should get federal money that they qualify for. And then in Sections 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13, there's a different, additional specific language that allows the administrator to waive or modify or suspend certain rules that are making the processing process burdensome and is contributing to the backlog that is contributing to the delay of all of these folks who are not being able to get their payments. And then in Section 15, this is the only section where there may be some limited expansion of benefits, but really what we're doing here is adding clarity as we've been empowered by the Department of Labor to do so that this question of good cause, which will be clarified in a regulatory process, doesn't hold up claims because there's some debate or some lack of consistency or some gray area about what is good cause for somebody not to go back to work if they have COVID-19 pandemic-related concerns. So, I think that the overall strategy here is between the emergency regs in Section 5 and the Section 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13 ability to waive and modify, suspend, suspend rules to allow you to more efficiently process things. Those sections allow for flexibility necessary to move significant number of claimants who are backlogged in the system now and will be backlogged continuing going forward through the system more quickly, trusting the leadership of Dieter to make good thoughtful decisions that are in compliance with, compliance with the law and the regulatory environment that we've created. And if it's not working, to be able to come back and adjust those regs long before we're back in session. Section 7, get us more money for those Nevadans that's already been in there. And Section 15, get clarity so we don't get hung up on good cause. Is that the overall concept here? To be able to move people more quickly through the system and get Nevadans the money they deserve?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Rady. Absolutely, that was, that was a great summary because the problem is that you can't just throw money at the issue, you can't just necessarily just throw more staff. We've got to realize that there are statutory impediments that create barriers for folks and that tie up the adjudications process. And that's exactly the strategy. If we would have had some of this authority, we would have been able to modify statutes from the beginning to make it easier for folks and to expand the pool of folks getting the extra $600. So, that's exactly right. And I would add that on the suitable work stuff, we're not, we're not just arbitrarily making up good cause. That's already in statute in NRS 612390, but there really isn't much there to give folks clarity. And so, the more ambiguity we have, the longer it's gonna take and the more confusion it's gonna give, or actually, it's going to make the claimant feel. So, you're right, we don't know what's gonna happen over the next seven months, but what I do know for a fact is that we don't want to be in the same situation that we were over the last months where we couldn't make any substantive statutory changes or regulatory changes. In other states, some, some states have suspended the application of a lot of different statutes pertaining to UI because they have that flexibility. And, and yes, it is a two-part approach. We're trying to tackle the regulatory, statutory barriers, but we're also working with Dieter in making sure that, you know, they have the resources and exploring technology solutions, you know, separately. But the purpose of this bill is to tackle those statutory barriers and get us ready, you know, for, over the next seven months.
And if we give you these tools, this greater flexibility, which is, you know, recognized a leap of faith on a part of a legislative body that likes to have things in statute, but if we give you this, how quickly do you think you can make a difference for Nevadans who have been waiting or been struggling?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Rady. We're gonna, we're going to go through these statutes and we're gonna look at all the different regulatory impediments and we're going to work with the Department of Labor to do it as quickly as possible. I can't give you a definite timeframe, but again, we don't know what's going to, we don't know what the future holds. So, yes, we're gonna try to look at the backlog, but, you know, in the event that we have another economic turmoil in the fall, we want to be able to be ready to, you know, be more nimble and.
Great, thank you. And then if I may, Madam Chair, one more. I just wanted to dig in, Mr. Morales, a little bit on this issue of fraud because there's been a lot of attention put on this issue and I'm a little concerned that the headline coming out of this meeting is gonna be that 50% of the PUA cases were fraudulent. And I think the testimony that I heard from the Dieter staff is that we don't know, that it could be anywhere between 1% and 100% and that perhaps we inadvertently have latched on to a number that is not an accurate number and we should not leave that impression out there in the world. In fact, the Attorney General's Office and the U.S. Attorney's Office are cooperating and collaborating on a task force to do a large-scale investigation that would help Dieter, who has indicated that they have a certain number of investigators, but in this kind of a situation, insufficient number of investigators, and we just don't know and that that task force job is to help figure that out. Is that more accurate? Because I'm really concerned that we have left an impression that is not accurate.
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Rady. That is correct. And I would also point out that fraud, in the context of what we're talking about, making general questions and asking for general numbers, really is, is, is difficult to assess because what we're seeing across other states too is systematic organized fraud as well. And so, you know, you could have, you know, effort, organized efforts that, you know, trigger claims. And so, you know, I would say, I'm not gonna speak for Dieter, but you're right. I mean, I think that, you know, focusing on the issue at hand is what's gonna get Nevadans their money. We're gonna continue to do all weekend and working with law enforcement to make sure that the system continues to overcome all the fraud challenges. But, but again, I mean, I think, I think that the focus here is how do we get legitimate claims or money quickly and continue to work with law enforcement to tackle the fraud issue.
Great.
Madam Chair, through you.
Oh, please.
Sorry. There's a bit of a delay on our end. I just wanted to add to that, to what Francisco said about potential fraudulent claims that are out there. The, as you mentioned, Senator, the Attorney General's Office is working with the FBI and various other federal and state partners. But Dieter also has, you know, prevention mechanisms in place pre-existing to COVID, to all of this. And there, it's, I don't want it to be misunderstood that any numbers that we may have guessed to potentially fraudulent claims that have been paid, very often, Dieter is able to catch them before any money goes out the door. So, even in the universe, even if we're close in the universe of how many potentially fraudulent claims are, that's in no way meant to be understood as that many fraudulent claims have been paid or received, you know, full money versus partial money. That's not what we're talking about in that framework, it's just the claims filed.
Great, I appreciate that clarification. And so, then I think there's also been an implication or in this, in this hearing that that fraud is the primary and major reason why so many Nevadans have had their claims slowed down. And I think there've been specific examples listed where, you know, I was looking at the articles online and there's a city councilman in Reno who had his, had a fraudulent claim filed under his name. But that doesn't stop somebody who is actually a legitimate person from getting their claim. There's all of these other reasons, this lack of flexibility, these statutory, statutory constraints that are stopping legitimate claims from moving through. And so, I think it is important that we keep those two issues somewhat separate and know that we have the Attorney General, the U.S. Attorney's Task, U.S. Attorney's Office Task Force working on the big-picture crime. We've got the Dieter Fraud Unit working to make sure that we're not giving a bunch of money to people who don't deserve it. But in the meantime, we need the vast majority of the rest of the agency focused on having the flexibility that they need to be able to process claims. And when there is something that clearly is happening to a large percentage of those claims to slow them down, they have the flexibility to waive, modify, or suspend rules so that they can move those folks through and not have to individually adjudicate them. Is that an accurate reflection, Mr. Morales or Ms. Dis?
Madam Chair, through you to Senator Rady. That is correct.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Senator Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one quick question. From what I heard, in addition to all the things that were just mentioned, is there not also some protections in here for employers in reference to employer charging relief and the employer experience rating?
Madam Chair, through you, Senator Dennis. Yes, absolutely, Senator, that is correct. There are two sections that deal with employers. Great setting. Both of those sections have amendments in this bill to allow the administrators to flexibly provide employer charging relief to employers affected by COVID-19.
Thank you, because I think that's important because not only are we providing relief for those that are applying and giving some tools to the administrators so that they can work with the backlog, but we're also trying to help and protect employers as we go forward in this process. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go ahead at this point and move to our public testimony on Senate Bill Number Three. For those of you who are joining us remotely and would like to give public testimony over the phone on Senate Bill Number Three, now is the time to do so. You can find the instructions for how to dial in on the bottom of our agenda, which is available on the legislative website. The way that that will work is that when you call in, you will be placed into a queue of callers. You must, of course, stay on the line until you are called, otherwise you will lose your place in the queue. The lines for public testimony are now open, so you can feel free to go ahead and dial in. We'll take public testimony first for those in support, followed by those who are in opposition, and we will conclude with those who are neutral on Senate Bill Number Three. We will also be limiting the testimony under this period of time for not more than two minutes per person. And of course, you can always supplement those public testimonies with written comments that can be added to the meeting on the legislative website. You can also, of course, have written comments added to the meeting on the legislative website in lieu of testifying. And the email address to submit written comments is also found on our Committee of the Whole Agenda item that is located on the legislative website. At this point in time, we are going to go ahead and turn it over to our very capable Legislative Council Bureau of Staff, and they will lead us through the public testimony. And we'll start with those who are in support of Senate Bill Number Three.
I am Lalo Montoya, L-A-L-O-M-O-N-T-O-Y-A, political director at Make Your Own Nevada. We are in support of SB Three. Thanks to the generosity of the Legal Aid Center of Southern Nevada, we have been able to co-host a series of unemployment insurance webinars in English and Spanish, engaging over 1,400 Nevadans. That was only throughout the month of July. The uncertainty families are facing is even greater as we head into August. The unemployment insurance system must be addressed, and we know many Nevadans have still been unable to get to the system to solve for unemployment benefits after losing their jobs during this pandemic, and that's why we urge you to pass SB Three. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 486. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, good evening, Alex Marx, A-L-E-X, M-A-R-K-S, speaking on behalf of the Education Support Employees Association, the recognized bargaining agent of ESPs in Clark County, speaking in support of SB Three. Following my testimony, you're going to hear a couple of letters from education support professionals who are going to share their stories of hardship and heartbreak over the last few months. I encourage you all to listen very carefully. ESPs need help, and they have not received it. In March, we rolled up our sleeves and our members moved from being food service workers, bus drivers, custodians, to essential workers on the front line for the pandemic. As some of you probably know, nine to 11 months, ESPs are not eligible to receive unemployment during, after the school year, rather. As such, many ESPs seek employment opportunities during the summer and become part-time or gig workers every single year so they can survive. Unfortunately, this year, because of COVID, job opportunities have been far more limited than they normally are. Since April, along with Teamsters Local 14, we've made every effort to find a way to achieve this through PUA. We've had meetings, we've sent thousands of emails. Meanwhile, our members are losing apartments and vehicles because they can't draw unemployment. They do feel forgotten in this process. Even our local superintendent forgot about us in his 2020 letter this week. This issue does deserve attention, and we do support SB Three because it provides the administrator a tool to implement the resolution we are seeking to extend benefits to ESPs. We would still request a more permanent fix in the future. ESPs are the heart of our students' learning, and our school districts do not function without them. We hope you remember that as you hear some of the stories that are going to follow my testimony. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 867. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin. Caller with the last three digits, 867. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin. Caller with the last three digits, 577. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Chris Bailey, C-H-R-I-S-B-A-L-Y, Nevada State Education Association, the voice of Nevada educators for over 100 years. NSCA supports SB Three revising provisions related to unemployment compensation. NSCA represents thousands of education support professionals across the state who provide vital services to children in Nevada's public education system, including nutrition services, instructional assistance, school secretary, maintenance and operations, and student transportation. Many of these employees work and are paid nine or 10 months per year. Many of our ESPs are low-wage and depend on summer jobs to make ends meet. For example, starting instructional assistance at Clark County School District makes $11.12 per hour. Working only nine months, they would make just over $17,000 for the school year, close to poverty wages. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, summer job opportunities have been severely limited. Nine, 10, 11 months, education employees are not eligible to receive unemployment benefits during the summer months if they have a reasonable assurance to return for the next school year. NSCA has been working with the Governor's Office and others to figure out how these employees could benefit from programs like Pandemic Unemployment Assistance, or PUA. While SB Three does not resolve this issue for education support professionals, it does give the administration the flexibility they would need to implement a fix in the event PUA or some other federal relief program becomes available. Would like to take a moment as well to thank Francisco Morales from the Governor's Office for his work on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Caller with the last three digits, 649. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Good evening, senators. My name is Vincent Nava, V-I-N-C-E-N-T-N-A-V-A. I'm calling in support of Senate Bill Three. I want to share a brief story of my parents and their journey navigating the unemployment system. Both of my immigrant parents were furloughed from the positions in casinos back in March. My father has worked as an employer for over 30 years and my mother for over 25 years. Despite being culinary union, local 226 members, they fell to the uncertainty that be unprecedented times. With their limited English-speaking abilities, I helped him apply for unemployment, and thankfully, they only waited two weeks to receive payment. It was only after being on the phone one day for over nine hours and learning the system that was both foreign to myself and to my parents in a matter of days. My father was recently called back to work, but absolutely no guarantee of consistent hours. He has been called in and then sent back after being at work just for one hour. My mother, on the other hand, has not only called back to work, and she's still waiting to be called back. They are the sole providers of themselves, both my sisters and my elderly aunt, who depends on them for various needs. My parents are hardworking and would like nothing more than for us to go back to work. Senate Bill Three would allow Nevadans like my parents to receive federal funding for seven more weeks. And for many like my family, seven weeks is a matter of life and death. I urge you to think about Elba and Martin Nava, the names of my parents and the people you elected to serve when you cast your vote in support of Senate Bill Three. Nevadans like Elba and Martin keep Nevada running, and it's the least we can do during difficult times we have been facing. I know you have a difficult decision to make, but I urge you to make the right one. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 130. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, Christine Saunders, that's C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E-S-A-U-N-D-E-R-S, here on behalf of the Progressive Leadership Alliance in Nevada in support of Senate Bill Three. I just want to echo the sentiments of everyone who has spoken in favor before me. This is a common-sense solution to help Nevadans who are struggling right now to pay their bills, feed their families, and keep a roof over their heads because of the pandemic, and we urge your vote in favor.
Caller with the last three digits, 982. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Lisa Guzman, that's L-I-S-A-G-U-Z-M-A-N, and I am the ESEA Executive Director and the Assistant Executive Director to the Nevada State Education Association. I have worked closely with Teamsters Local 14, and I wanted just to read a letter from our president. It says, "Dear Senators, I speak in favor of SB Three. I'm addressing you tonight regarding unemployment benefits for education support professionals. The PUA unemployment funding included gig workers, hairstylists, manicurists, and other self-employed workers who provide convenient or personal services to the community. I do believe that these types of workers should be eligible for unemployment benefits, but I am confused why you did not add the education support employees. ESPs provide essential services and are the heartbeat of our students' learning. Without the education support professional, a school district cannot operate. We are essential and deserve the same benefits as non-essential employees. Without the unemployment benefits of our nine, 10, and 11-month ESPs and their families are left hungry and close to becoming homeless. If they are unable to return to their school district position due to the pandemic, who will be there to ensure our students' needs are met? I implore you to include ESPs in this unemployment bill and make it retroactive. It's vital to the continuation of our students' learning environment, and it is the humanitarian thing to do. There is no other option due to COVID-19 for education support professionals to gain other income. Please listen to your heart and help the ESPs that are the heartbeat of student learning by allowing them to receive unemployment benefits and ensure that it is retroactive. Thank you. Jan Giles, ESEA Interim President." Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 261. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
For the record, my name is Josmin Margarita Tovin. T as in Tom, O as in Boy, O as in Nancy, community member and advocate and organizing specialist at Planned Parenthood Votes Nevada. I'm calling in support of SB Three because this bill will make much-needed changes to the state's unemployment insurance system. Nevada is facing a number of challenges right now, and I urge this body to consider the fact that we don't know what the long-term effects of this pandemic are, but we know what's happening right now. Nevadans are at risk of their health, their home, and their livelihood. Making sure that unemployment insurance is accessible for families who are depending on it is absolutely vital to the long-term well-being of Nevadans. I ask that you pass this bill because it extends someone's ability to collect unemployment from 13 weeks to 20 weeks, and it provides COVID-specific protections for high-risk families to not return to work and still have the ability to collect unemployment. Our state system of unemployment was not prepared for this level of usage of operation, but I know this legislative body is battle-born and willing to support what is right. And it's not difficult to make the right decision. So fight for your constituents, fight for Nevadans, fight for the people of our great Silver State's well-being. I thank you for this time. Please support SB Three.
Caller with the last three digits, 830. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Autumn Tampa, speaking as an individual, A-U-T-U-M-N-T-A-M-P-A. I'm very emotional when it comes to this subject because I'm one of those ESPs who doesn't get unemployment during the summer. Luckily, I have about eight credit cards, and I'm only owe about a year's salary in debt right now, so it's not too bad. I also want to speak a little bit about some of the other people. I live in a small apartment complex, and most people live paycheck to paycheck. There's independent contractors here, there's substitute teachers, there's another bus driver from the school district, and many of those people are really struggling. If we didn't have a decent apartment manager, they would have been out on the street, and of course, thanks to the Governor's mandate, not be able to kick anybody out. But they have not received any money, and they have legitimate claims for unemployment. They are not fraudulent. They are real, honest-to-goodness people who've just said they're scared. They don't know what they're going to do if they don't get this money. So I urge you, from the bottom of my heart, to please pass this bill. Worry about the fraudulent cases with what you have to, but you can't penalize those people who have valid cases, who can't pay their bills, who don't have food. You can't penalize them because of those other cases. So take this action now, help the people who need it, and then worry about the other stuff later. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 201. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Melody Hudilla, that is M-E-L-O-D-Y-J-U-D-I-L-L-A. On behalf of Silver State Voices, I rise in support of SB Three. At Silver State Voices, we work towards the Nevadas, who are underrepresented in marginalized communities, like communities of color and low-income households, are at the forefront of our democracy. Part of having a healthy democracy is ensuring that the most vulnerable Nevadans, the very same Nevadans who register to vote or ask to leave a public comment during special sessions, have the basic necessities of a securely and dignity. We support SB Three because democracy in action looks like having each other's back each and every day, but especially in times of crisis. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 971. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and...
Hi, for the record, my name is Ariel Guevara, that's A-R-I-E-L-G-U-E-V-A-R-A, and I am the Civic Engagement Coordinator with Misfamilia Vote Nevada. Misfamilia Vote Nevada is in support of SB Three as it extends someone's ability to collect unemployment from 13 weeks to 20 weeks, provides COVID-specific protections for high-risk families to not return to work and still have the ability to collect unemployment, whereas normally they'd lose unemployment if they turned down a job offer. And this is extremely important for the Latinx community, which has been disproportionately affected statistically by this pandemic. And it also, you know, with plenty of Latinx members working on the front lines as essential workers in grocery stores, in hospitals, this is the sort of protection that is needed for our families. So for these reasons, Misfamilia Vote encourages you to pass SB Three. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 781. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, my name is Holly Ramella, H-O-L-L-Y-R-A-M-E-L-L-A, and I'm calling as an individual. I am in Senate District 11, and I am calling in support of SB Three. My spouse was furloughed in March, and we spent weeks on hold with unemployment to get their claim. It took two months for us to receive that money, and we were extremely lucky to happen to have some savings, which we usually don't. Other people and families have had to skip meals, transportation, and other basic needs because of this delay, and that's unacceptable. This week, the $600 ended. My spouse has been applying for jobs since May despite fear of being immunocompromised and getting a job that puts their life at risk and has not been able to find anything. My job also... My job also faced budget cuts, and we just bought our first house in November. Nevadans should not be punished for a global pandemic and economic crisis. We deserve an efficient unemployment system and extended time for financial stability. Because of systemic racism, unemployment and COVID-19 disproportionately impact Black and Brown folks. Nevada leadership has said Black Lives Matter, so I hope you back that with action. I ask that you prioritize Nevada residents and avoid, and avoid an even worse economic crisis by passing SB Three. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, eight, nine, eight. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
For the record, my name is Annette Magnus, and I am the Executive Director of Battleborn Progress. Tonight, I'm going to tell you a couple stories because I usually write my testimony, but I wanted to tell you about the things that I experienced during the pandemic in its earliest days. My team and I decided to open up a food pantry in my garage because our neighbors and our families and the people we serve every day couldn't feed themselves. I still, to this day, have people begging me for food every single day because they can't get their money from unemployment. I have seen people I love struggle for months to be able to get money from the unemployment system. My neighbor, my 72-year-old neighbor Javier, I was paying his bills for him because he, his wife is disabled, and they couldn't get food on the table. And they were afraid that our HOA was going to come after them. These are the very real stories I saw every single day as we were feeding people and making sure that they had roofs over their heads because they are disabled and couldn't keep their, their food on the table. I had another young man contact me because he was suicidal because he was not getting his money. And I contacted Bailey at Legal Aid because we were afraid when he tried to commit suicide and was at UMC, they were going to kick him out of his own home because he couldn't pay his rent. And we were, we had to have the Attorney General's Office step in because he was at risk of losing everything he had because he was in the hospital from trying to commit suicide because he couldn't get his money, because he couldn't pay his bills. People are desperate. We are seeing it every single day. We hear the stories. We see these people who are experiencing unthinkable things because of this pandemic. And it didn't just start during this pandemic. It was, it started far before this because people are not being paid a living wage. But right now, we have an opportunity to do the right thing. We have an opportunity to give them an extra few weeks and not have to worry about food on the table or keeping a roof over their head.
If you could, please go ahead and wrap up.
About this. Yep, I don't usually get emotional about these things, but this is a matter of life or death, and I'm begging you to vote yes on this issue. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, one, zero, four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, my name is Maria Teresa Lieberman Parrega. And that's M A R I A hyphen T E R E S A L I E C E R M A N N hyphen P A R R A G A. And I am calling on behalf of the, of the Parrega part of my last name, my mother, who wanted to testify, but she's a housekeeper that has been cleaning rooms on the streets for over 30 years. I'm retired today, so I'm going to do this for her. She waited three months until she got word that she would get her unemployment. She would call every day. If she got someone, it was a struggle on figuring out what the problem or the backlog was. And it was, it was an extremely difficult situation, not only for her, but for myself and everybody around her because we all tried to help, but nobody could find answers. And this bill has the answers that we were looking for. And we need you, these legislators, to do what's right for people like my mother, who are the backbone of this state, cleaning the hotels, clearing for their lives, finally back to work, and those that are still not back to work. We need you to do right by them and make sure that any of those folks that are still left behind and don't have work or have little work can get the money that they rightfully deserve. And like another caller said, you can deal with the fraud later. But this is far more important. People are almost dying, and you need to help them. And you help them by supporting SB Three.
If you could, please go ahead and wrap up.
Caller with the last three digits, one, three, four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, my name is Nia Banks, for the record, N I A B A N K S. And I'm a Black person currently living in Congressional District Three, who is in full support of SB Three. I'm going to try to keep this short and simple so even the people who's listening with the most cotton in their ears can understand. What does it hurt you that unemployed people will be possibly given the chance at more money to survive a pandemic with this bill? There are people that I know right now who have to live on $1,200 for four months. My friends who are independent contractors and me included, we have not been paid at all in four months with no chance of us getting any money during this pandemic or any financial security for now or the foreseeable future. And for any person who is against this bill, you have to be one of the most selfish people in the entire world. If the Senate would just give some of Metro's $900 million that they're delegated in this current budget year for their little war play toys and just give that money to families who are being evicted daily for not being able to make rent, we could solve this entire problem. You should just give people more leniency in not being able to pay their bills and people that have to go to work during a pandemic. Also, I would like to respond to a particular woman who thought it was okay to oppose criminal justice reform yesterday to say, what about COVID? Here's your reformist, ma'am. You better be calling in for support of SB Three just like the rest of us are, or you're a hypocrite. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, four, zero, two. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Terri Schuman, S H U M A N. And I'm calling in to be in favor of SB Three. I'm speaking in favor of SB Three and want to thank Alex, Chris, Lisa, and Autumn, who have spoken before me. ESPs all over our state are instrumental and considered vital to the schools and departments in which we work. In the past, I have been an Uber driver during the summer, but with the pandemic, I do not feel it is safe enough to do so. So instead of driving this summer, I applied to work for extended school year. But because there were so many people trying to get work in the summer, there were not enough positions to go around. Therefore, I have not been able to collect any financial support whatsoever during this summer period. Rent will now be due in two weeks. Sorry. Um, please pass SB Three to help us get through the rough times. I am not the only one speaking in favor of this, and we do have many others who are in support. One more thing I want to add is that, um, I started in the district 14 years ago, and I am making less today than what I made back then due to the fact that I've been through four surpluses. We need your help, not just now during the pandemic, but through the legislative sessions that are, that will be coming up in the near future. Please support our school district. Please support our support staff employees and help us to make it through, um, so that we can be able to pay the bills that are laying on our desk. Thank you and have a good evening.
Caller with the last three digits, three, one, four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Felipe, F E L I P E Silva, S I L V A. Um, Felipe Silva with Make Your Own Nevada, and I'm here to support, uh, SB Three. Um, over the course of the last couple of weeks, since the pandemic really, you know, we have transitioned to working from home, and a lot of our work really revolves around calling families and checking up on them and seeing what type of assistance that they might need aside from the stuff that, you know, is being offered, like unemployment, um, you know, the, the program for housing that the city has, and seeing what we can fill in the gaps. And it's, it's truly, um, shocking to hear how a lot of these folks that used to be okay are now living in, in garages, are now living in their cars, living in the streets. And, and how if something like, if they had something like unemployment, they would have just qualified. You know, they would have, you know, had a different, uh, situation. And so just to know that there's tons of families right now, thousands of families in Nevada that, that depend on that in that, you know, this bill could potentially, like someone said before, change their lives. Um, you know, I think that's enough reason to, to make the right choice. So I have a lot of faith in, in our legislation, uh, here in Nevada and our legislators, that they will do the right thing, um, for the families that are looking, you know, for solutions. And I know that, you know, this wasting our, our Sunday right now and being here is going to be for something. Um, but thank you for your time.
Caller with the last three digits, four, eight, four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
For the record, my name is Cheyenne Kyle, K Y L E. I'm a community member and food rights activist in the city of Las Vegas, um, Congressional District One. And I just would like to give, um, my voice and support of SB, of, in support of this bill. Um, specifically with my situation with unemployment. I started working out here in the city when I was 15. I have never not been without work. Um, on March 16th, I was unemployed. Um, I went into, into work on March 15th. On March 16th, I was unemployed, like most of the people who work on the Las Vegas Strip. At that time, I had two jobs. My cousin, who was living with me at the time, um, worked at Caesar's Palace, and on March 18th, he was unemployed. Shortly after receiving my benefits for, um, unemployment, I was in an abusive situation to where my living situation was no longer safe. Within one day, my employment benefits were depleted by simply renting a U-Haul, trying to find a place to live, which I couldn't do, and ended up homeless and, um, couch surfing for a couple of weeks in order to save my benefit amount so that I could be in a situation to where I could try to provide for myself. Understand that these are unprecedented times, but many of these Nevadans are hardworking. The fact that the conversation continues to revolve around fraud is very, very concerning to me. We understand that a lot, our city is based in tourism. This is, it's not our fault that our, that we didn't develop other industries that people could go and work in to help survive, to help provide for their families. From my personal situation, I ended up, again, homeless and couch surfing. When I finally did save my, enough of my unemployment amount to find a place to live in a steeple suite, the pandemic assistance is canceled. The rent where I am staying now is $306. My appointment, my weekly benefit amount is $271. I am supporting a whole nother person, my cousin, who also left that abusive situation with me, who calls unemployment every day and has been calling unemployment every day since March 18th. All my benefits are the only ones, are the only benefits that we receive. I have to pay for groceries. I have to pay for the rent, which is $306, and my weekly amount is $271.
If you could, please go ahead and wrap up.
We both have... Sure. I just would like to make sure that, that you guys understand that we understand that these are unprecedented times, but it's very important for you to show your concerns for the constituents that you say that you care about. A lot of these people are hardworking and do not want to rely on this system, but we have no other option. So for once, our system needs to show up for us. Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three digits, eight, six, seven. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Kathy McDonald, M C D O N A L D. I am a member of ESEA and a bus driver with Clark County School District. I'm in support of SB Three, and I ask that the legislatures support the ESPs. Most of the ESPs' last paycheck was June 3rd, and because of the unprecedented times, uh, summer work is not available in the school district or elsewheres. We petitioned the governor back in May, asking for an exception to the rule to allow ESPs to apply for PUA, and we have not heard anything. Without the help of friends, I would be evicted. I wouldn't have a car. And now my rent goes up September 1st. And all I've had to live on is the $1,200 stimulus check because I am not allowed to apply for PUA. I am asking my legislatures to help the support professionals by allowing us to apply for PUA and to get help to many other Nevadans who need help. Thank you for your time.
And we will go ahead and take our last caller in support and then move on to opposition.
Caller with the last three digits, five, one, zero. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Willis Barron, L I L I T H B A R A N. Nice to speak with you again this evening. Um, I'm calling in full support of this bill because I'm watching everybody that I know suffer, and I don't know if you are and if you are in the same class as all of us that are calling. But if you were, you would certainly vote in support of this bill. I'm wondering who you think is going to watch your kids? Who is going to cook your meal? Who is going to clean your homes? Who is going to water your lawn? Who is going to take you to the places you need to go? Who is going to provide the entertainment that you need to live a nice quality of life? Who is going to sell you groceries? Who is going to do all of these things if you kill us slowly through poverty? It is very important that you support the bottom because we support you. Everything that you do and that you depend on in your life depends on our well-being as well. You cannot live this life without us, though you are trying very hard. Please do better. Please do much, much better than this. Thank you.
Okay, we will now go ahead and move to testimony in opposition to Senate Bill Number Three. If you are wishing to testify in opposition to Senate Bill Number Three, please listen carefully to the instructions, and we will take your testimony now.
If you wish to testify in opposition to this bill, please press star nine now to get your place in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, eight, four, one. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, um, my name is Kenisha Bray, K E N N I S H A, last name Bray. Um, I'm calling because I apply, I'm an individual, but I applied for unemployment back in March, March the 29th. I waited and waited and waited, borrowed money from my mother, um, my stepfather, looked for jobs, you know, um, to try to get by. By the time I was able to get, um, a call back from someone, I had a really rude adjudicator. She told me that I didn't deserve the money and that I needed to go look for a job. So I tried to reach out to the mayor's or anyone I could speak to. Even my employer said that, you know, she didn't contest that I shouldn't get my unemployment due to the reason I left. I didn't quit, you know. It was, it was a separation. So I was calling just to let it be known that I would like for workers that work for the unemployment to be fair. Um, because you have a bad day at work, this is my life in your hands and your decision. And now I'm still sitting here looking for a job, trying to figure out what's the next thing, looking online at who helps with unemployment. Just, I'm just stuck in a bad situation. And I hope, um, someone will hear me out and is able to help me. Thank you.
We are still in opposition to this bill. If you wish to provide... We are still in opposition to this bill. If you wish to provide testimony in opposition, please press star nine now. Caller with the last three digits, three five four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is April Verme, B like Victor, E R, M like Mary Y. I'm calling in today, uh, because much so like everyone else, I am one who filed for the PUA. I'm an Uber driver. Um, I've been sitting with transaction numbers on my claim for about a month now. Prior to that, there was no movement. You can't get any answers from the unemployment. I've reached out to legislators, senators, governor, and I'm not receiving any help. I'm a single mother and I'm losing everything from underneath me and we need help. We need help out here and I just hope that theater can open up their, their heart and understanding. I get that they have a job to do, but clearly if you've already approved me and approved others, we're not fraud. So pay us. We deserve it. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, two eight two. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. Two minutes, maybe begin.
Uh, my name is Marion Derrick. I'm a delivery driver for a prescription glasses. I got laid off due to COVID-19 and I worked since last year, mid of last year. But then up to now, I haven't got paid. They never checked my, my claim. Every time I called, they said, don't worry about it. I would get paid, but it's been five months. My gosh. I just leave with my, um, EBT card and now we're going to be evicted on September 1st. So what will I do? I mean, what else can I do? And that's why I'm calling just to let you know that we're struggling here. Thank you. I hope you can help us. God bless.
Caller with the last three digits, six nine.
I was just going to say, I wanted to remind everyone who's joining us that we're currently still in public testimony on Senate Bill number three and taking opposition to Senate Bill number three.
Caller with the last three digits, six nine one. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn, J A C K Y L I N E, last name Coleman, C O L E M A N. My last day of work was March 17th. The governor asked, uh, me to stay home. Uh, at this time, my family and I are in dire need of help. We're almost getting a business out. Uh, I'm unable to pay my car payment. Uh, my car has, my car pay, my car insurance has lapsed. I provided my 1099, my ID, my social security card, my bills, my bank statement to PUA and PUA tells me that I have to call DETR. And that they can't help me, that they're holding my pay. Um, 19 weeks, I've only got one payment of $1,069. They have lowered my determination of lowered payment and they're still saying on there that I'll receive payment, but I have not received any money. There's no money on my bank account. My husband's unemployment from his insurance has been hacked with unemployment with the bank card. Uh, we don't know what to do now. Um, I have no job. We have no job and we need help. Uh, if the governor maybe didn't ask us to stay home, we would still be maybe working, but there's no, there's no international travels here and we're in a dire need and I'm in support of the SB three. And please help us and the community and the people here in Nevada. Thank you.
For the callers that have just joined, we're still in opposition to this bill. If you wish to provide testimony in opposition, please press star nine now to get your place in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, nine six three. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, my name is Yesenia Moya, Y E S E N I A, M O Y A. And I would like to say that every single person before me has been in favor of, um, SB three. So it's confusing if you switched over officially and you haven't changed it. Um, I would like to say that I am in favor of SB three. We need these provisions to extend to folks. COVID-19 is ravaging our most marginalized community and we need the theater to do the right thing. Stop, um, stop wasting time. Stop killing us. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, nine zero three. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, my name is Monique Newkirk, M O N I Q U E N E W K I R K. And I am with NESA and I vote for this bill. And I have worked for people that I helped get their PUA and they got it. I haven't gotten anything, but I have no other people that have gotten it. But my point to you guys is that PUA is in a different state. They don't even know our law. They're telling us to apply for un- irregular unemployment so we can be denied and give the denial letter, basically upload the denial letter to them. Well, just like I told her, that's against the law in the state of Nevada. They didn't even know that. I sent a letter in because they just got a new rule. She said that you have to have a copy of your ID, your license, your, um, W-2 and some other things in order for you to be approved. Well, if we're all approved and nobody's giving us money, I don't understand that because me, myself personally, I've lost things twice. I've, I've had to start over twice. And that's not a good thing because people are looking at you like you don't know how to manage your money. You can't manage something that you don't have. So please help everybody out in Nevada that needs this because it'll help us and it'll make our state look a whole lot better. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, five four seven. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Yeah, this is Andrew Henry, A N B R E W H E N R Y. UI claimant ID, five zero eight four four six two. I'll be very short and sweet about this. I think everybody needs benefits right now. Currently, I've tried to get ahold of Nevada UI Claims Department to no avail like many. Now, I currently have an outstanding balance, I believe, of $1,584 that is owed to me. Why is this owed to me? Because I clearly stated that I do not want taxes withheld and I need that money. Not only that, but my, uh, remaining, uh, balance on my account is $154. Now, how is that possible if I'm only on my 19th payment coming up? They're allowed up to 26 weeks and more with the CARES Act extension. None of this makes sense. Everyone is in desperate need of these funds right now. I don't even see how this could possibly be an argument. And that is all I have to say aside from the fact that I want my money and I want someone to contact me about that as soon as possible, just like everyone else.
Caller with the last three digits, eight five two. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
All right. Thank you. My name is Shane, S H A N E Simmons, S I M M O N S. Claim number two one three eight eight five for PUA. Um, I'm going to try to be as short and sweet as possible as well. You know, families and people are suffering right now, losing everything, their houses, their cars. Blowing through their life savings, just trying to stay afloat. I personally have lost my place to live twice, uh, because in fact, uh, the people that have helped me don't believe I'm going to get my funds. I have filed for regular UI. Um, I do have an employer, but have not made enough money to qualify for UI. I am also a gig worker in the entertainment industry. And as you know, the entertainment industry is shut down right now. So I am flat out out of work. I have no money. Uh, my last paycheck was $35 on March 5th. I have not received anything. Um, I did not receive a stimulus, um, due to some, a, a small, uh, balance of back child support after 14 years of successful payment. I have spent countless hours and every single day since June 25th on the phone, um, all day, every day. Um, I've talked to several agents, adjudicators, supervisors, adjudicators have been chatting with supervisors. And evidently there's a coding that only the ETR can remove. I am ineligible, uh, for UI. And I have uploaded every single document possible. Uh, my, my denial and ineligibility from UI, um, my proof of address, my valid Nevada, um, ID, my front, front and back, as well as social security card, front and back, as well as my approval letter from PUA. As of right now, 22 weeks claimed, not one penny paid. And I have not received any emails or communications at all from anybody except for my approval letter from PUA. That's all that's holding me back from my money. I have not received anything and I'm about to lose my place to live again. This is unacceptable. DETR has closed down two occasions that I know of at about one o'clock in the afternoon have closed their call centers, making it absolutely impossible for people to reach them. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you very much for voicing my opinion. Have a wonderful day. I support this bill.
Caller with the last three digits, three three one. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Yes, my name is Brianna Lowney, B R E A N N A L O W N E Y. And I am in favor of this bill. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, the fact that the, all of the money is being held up like this makes absolutely no sense. Um, and all of, all DETR has given is excuses and they want to blame fraud when it's their, it's their fault that they allowed the fraud to get through in the first place. So it's really frustrating for everyone with all the different issues who really seriously need this money. And, um, yeah, this is just frustrating. So that's all I, that's all I have to say.
Caller with the last three digits, three zero, or zero three nine, excuse me. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Erica Minnaberry. That's E R I K A M I N A B E R R Y. I am a community organizer. I was laid off in March and hearing these stories of the people that came before me is heartbreaking. I only went one month without getting my benefits and I would not have been able to to support myself and my three kids if I did not have those benefits. Now that they are running out, I am looking at starting a job at much less pay than I was making before. At the same time, I'm looking at homeschooling my children because I can't send them to school to, um, just get me and my, you know, compromised friends sick. And, um, yeah, so this is the right thing to do. I support this bill. Thank you very much. I really appreciate my time.
Caller with the last three digits, seven six six. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Um, hi, yes, thank you. My name is Matthew Wilkie, M A T T H E W, W I L K I E. And, um, I'm, um, very fortunate. Um, I am a worker in the healthcare field who did not lose my job. But listening to my fellow friends before me, it is imperative, um, that this needs to be fixed. Listening to my patients in the healthcare field over these last few months, it is, it's heartbreaking to listen, um, to their stories of not only, um, personal health, um, but now financial heart, um, financial pain, which is now causing other health concerns. I fully support this and thank you very much.
Madam Chair, there are no more hands raised for opposition.
Okay. We will, we will, uh, we will move on to neutral testimony. If you are here to testify in the neutral position, um, that you neither support nor oppose, Senate Bill number three, we will go ahead and take your testimony at this point in time. So please listen carefully to the instructions. And again, we are in neutral, neutral testimony, um, which is where you don't support or oppose, um, but maybe have some general comments on the bill.
If you wish to provide neutral testimony, please press star nine now to get your place in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, seven eight nine. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, my name is Aluna Fessler, A L U N A, last name Fessler, F E S S L E R. Dear God, please help these people. Like I'm crying listening to these testimonies. It is breaking my heart. Please help these people. Thank you. That's all I'd say.
Caller with the last three digits, five six five. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, my name is Sean Stewart. That's S T U A R T. Um, I'm just calling because I'm an entertainer like many people in Las Vegas, the entertainment capital of the world. And we are, we've been out of work since January and I have, I applied for unemployment, got denied. I applied for PUA. I have submitted my driver's license, my social security card, my denial letter, my 2019 tax forms and no movement. I have been 19 weeks without any money, without a penny. I am one of the lucky ones that my parents live in Las Vegas. So at 33 years old, I had to move in with my parents because I couldn't afford anything. I have called the adjudication line and they have said that they can't do anything, that all of the documents are there and that it'll be another 21 days, which it has been, and there's still been zero movement. Entertainers in the entertainment capital are drowning right now, not to mention all the other departments that are struggling. We have to pass this. We are, the worst state, other states are worried. My friends in other states are worried for us right now because of what we are going through. They cannot believe that people have gone months with no payment at all and this has to be passed, please. And thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, five eight four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Um, Marion Derrick, M E R I A N D E R R I C K, claim number six two three two seven. I'm working at Gilbert State Dell Specialist. I was laid off since March, first week of March. I uploaded all the documents they needed, including my tax, including, uh, 1099, passport, uh, social security, driver license, my bills. Up to now, uh, I haven't heard anything from them. It's just a monetary, uh, letter, no approval, no nothing. And when I called the, uh, adjudicator and the agent, uh, they told me not to worry about it, but I have to worry about it. So I don't know. Up to now, I haven't got paid any penny. So I, I think, uh, we need this bill. I support this bill. Thank you so much and God bless. Bye.
Caller with the last three digits, three seven one. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Sandra Owens, S A N D R A O W E N S. I want to clarify for the record that there are zero negative comments for this bill. The last three neutral ones were all positive and mine is positive. So please make that correction. Also, I want the legislature to know that there's a trickle down effect. People in the state are getting rid of their employees wrongly and unjustly, namely Nevada's system of higher ed. I know of five cases where they have wrongly terminated faculty and staff without due process, without hearing. They violated their They violated their own grievance and code, but they're trying to save money because they use outside attorneys from Jackson Lewis at $500 an hour to get rid of faculty and staff who have talked about Black Lives Matter, who have been whistleblowers, and they, you know, believe that they're untouchable. But they are adding to this crisis because the police fire people unjustly in the state. It's a good cause, even if it wasn't, now they're not eligible for unemployment. Or when they file people, or people resign before they're fired because the writing's on the wall, and they don't want a termination on their record and lose their, you know, medical, nursing, social work license, then they resign. They've been forced out. And now they don't qualify because they left wrongly. So the Nevada system of higher ed is adding to this problem. And I implore you to pass this bill. Thank you.
We are still in neutral for this bill. If you wish to provide testimony, neutral, please press star nine now. Caller with the last three digits, 504, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hello, my name is Brittany Sheehan, B-R-I-T-T-A-N-Y-S-H-E-E-H-A-N. I haven't had a chance to look at the bill, so I'm actually neutral on the bill. What I hope the bill does is help, help these people that so desperately need the help. I don't think it's fair that the state can simultaneously say, you cannot operate in your job-making capacity for five months, and also, we're not going to pay you. You know, the PUA system is just a disaster, and these people have a civil class action, and that's kind of moving too slow to bring the relief that I feel it could have. So I do hope that this legislature comes together with a good solution. I haven't looked at the bill. I have no idea what you guys can do. But also, I want to say that I was offended today that the GOP chairwoman was called a partisan hack publicly, and we cannot do this kind of thing to each other right now. We are in a crisis. And I'm offended, and I think that we have to have more respect for all Nevadans regardless of their political ideologies. We are in a bad spot as a state, and that was completely inappropriate. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more hands raised for neutral testimony.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we certainly appreciate everyone who has called in to give their stories and to testify on Senate Bill Number Three. I think we all appreciate hearing from all of you. With that, we will go ahead and close the hearing on Senate Bill Number Three. Pleasure of the committee. Senator Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we do pass.
There's a do pass motion on the floor. Senator Rady, be to it. Senator Kinsella, a second from Senator Rady. Any discussion on the motion? Senator Settlemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This testimony and all the emails for months that we've been getting has clearly showed that the citizens of the state of Nevada need help, and they've needed this help for a long time. Unemployment is higher now than it was during the depression, 25%. And sadly, that was the same thing it was in the last special session. We absolutely need to speed up the ability of legal claims to be paid. But it's also clear that the fraudulent claims are plugging up the system. I'd really like to see an amendment to add $10 million of CARES Act funding to Dieter so they can speed up this process and help these people out. But as some people have always said, you can't let perfect be the enemy of good. In that respect, I support this, but we should have made this a priority on day one of the first special session. Thank you.
Senator Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo what my colleague just said. This was one of the most disturbing hearings I've participated in. As everybody here knows, I've been complaining about a lot of bills that don't belong in the special session. This is the most important bill by far, and this should have been the very first bill we heard on the very first day of the very first special session. The reality is that we have hundreds of thousands of Nevadans, as we got to hear a little bit of a slice of tonight. Plus, all of us have received hundreds, if not thousands, of emails from literally desperate people. And to hear Dieter tonight, I can't tell you how disturbed I was to find out that they didn't get this thing till 3:30 today. This is the 15th day of special sessions that we've been involved in. And to hear the government agency that's responsible to help all of these hundreds of thousands of desperate Nevadans tell me that they haven't even had an input until today on these bills. Clearly, we should have dealt with this the very first day. These people in Dieter need literally dozens, if not hundreds, of additional staff people to deal with this. And the idea that they have put out $6.2 billion with as much as 50% estimated to be fraudulent, $3 billion of potential fraud. We spent how many days talking about mining taxes that would have generated perhaps a half a million, or excuse me, a half a billion dollars? Yet here we have fraud, the equivalent of six times what the mining tax would have done, and we waited till now to finally address this? This is an embarrassment to this institution and to this special session. I'm 100% for this bill, but frankly, it doesn't go nearly far enough. This is the most COVID-related issue in the state of Nevada, and the fact that it's the 15th day we finally get to this is just disgraceful and brings, frankly, dishonor to us. And for all of those tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of Nevadans that have been desperately looking for relief, now finally we're getting to it. So I urge my colleagues to not only pass this bill tonight, but that we, in the next few days, talk to Dieter and come up with amendments or whatever, an additional bill, to give them the resources they need to really, truly address both the fraud side of it and the desperate people that in so many cases haven't had a nickel since March. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Hanson. Senator Orangehill.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm going to be voting for Senate Bill Three, and I urge all the members of your committee to support Senate Bill Three. I think that it goes a long way towards trying to solve some of the problems our constituents have been facing, trying to get their benefits. And I believe that it may not solve every problem, but I think it's going to move us a long way and help our constituents. And I did want to correct one thing my colleague from Sparks said. I heard Ms. Goff from Dieter mention that she'd seen five different versions of the bill as there's progressions and changes, and that the final version, I believe, was given to her this afternoon. Not that this was the first time she saw that bill. I just wanted to correct that for the record because the agency certainly was not blindsided by this legislation. I heard her mention that she's seen five different versions. We all know as legislators that when we work on a draft, there's changes, there's input, there's deletions. We try to make it the best bill we can before we introduce it. And that's what I heard from Ms. Goff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Gogacchia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also rise and supported the bill. Unfortunately, I'm afraid the people in Nevada, especially those that are truly suffering, think this is going to be a magic wand, and it's not. It's an expansion of the benefits. It does nothing to cure those people and those problems they've got where they've been since March trying to get an unemployment claim through. We've all received these calls, and I concur with everyone in this body. We need to fix this. And we've got to stand Dieter up and let him address it. And I ask the committee to please consider that.
Senator Hardy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to figure out how to get a bouquet to the Chair of Dieter.
Any additional comments on the motion? Senator Hammond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In addition, I echo a lot of the comments that have already been made, but I think that one of the things that has been heard or said tonight, and you heard it in several comments, that there are still some folks that sort of occupy a particular profession that is sort of excluded from all of this and still are affected by it. Those would be adjunct faculty members of universities, and as you heard, some of the staff from schools. But I believe there is legislation. There's a separate category that needs to be addressed in statute that we'd have to look at to do that. So I just think there's a little bit more work that could be done on this bill to make it a little bit better. But, you know, it was nice to be able to hear from a lot of these folks. We all, I know every single one of us have heard from thousands of people probably, talked to them on the phone, written emails over the last few months. This is an issue that should have been addressed and should have been addressed weeks ago, when we've probably started the first session. So I'm glad that we're going at it because they need it. Thank you.
Senator Rady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be on the record being in the strongest of support for this bill. I want to commend the individuals who have been working on this bill and been working on this bill for weeks to make sure that they were combing through everything in the Department of Labor Guidance, talking to the folks at Dieter about what challenges they were really facing, to figure out what kind of flexibility they needed to get it done. Again, I think I've said it already, but I'll just go through it very quickly. It gives them the opportunity to do emergency regs. It sets the statutory trigger language to make sure that these Nevadans that we heard from tonight who are so compelling, once they do get their benefit, that they can get an additional seven weeks. It gives the administrator flexibility to waive, modify, or suspend multiple rules that are getting in the way of moving these claims along, and it gives some clarity around the good cause reasons, which I think is being interpreted as an expansion to benefits. I think it's an outstanding question that needs clarity, and once that clarity is in place, we'll be able to move these benefits along. So I'm very grateful to the folks who were on the screen today, both from Dieter, who I know has been working at this tirelessly for months, and has been working on bringing us legislative solutions, to Mr. Morales and Mrs. who presented the bill on behalf of the governor's office, and the good work that they've been doing, several members of this body who've spent time on it. Perhaps, you know, could have been done earlier perhaps, but I think a lot of, I don't think, I know a significant amount of work went into bringing us a list of good solutions that will make a difference, and I am enthusiastically supporting them. I encourage my colleagues to do so as well.
Senator Kieffer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the best things about being a legislator is when you can successfully help one of your constituents. And this process and this difficulty with unemployment has been one of the most frustrating parts of being a legislator because we have really been unable to intervene on behalf of our constituents and navigate the sort of government for them, which is one of the things I think we're charged with as elected officials. And for all the people who we've been unable to help and are still waiting, I'm sorry, right? And I'm also sorry that this bill probably isn't going to do a lot to alleviate some of that, but for the people coming next, it will. This bill promotes work, right? And I think that's important. This bill encourages people to go back to work even if it doesn't fulfill their need because it allows them to retain eligibility for benefits. It'll help future applicants avoid some of the main adjudication problems that are creating some of the backlogs. And it'll protect people's health as they deal with, deal with the pandemic and problems facing them, on top of the additional seven weeks of benefits that we've talked about. Unfortunately, we'll not be able to apply retroactively. It doesn't solve those current backlogs. But this recovery is going to take a long time, and applying something prospectively is still going to help a lot of people. And I think we can be happy that we're doing that and hope that as we move forward, those who are still struggling can find relief as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Ganzler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to make it clear that I'm in strong support of this legislation, and I'm extremely frustrated, and I imagine many of my colleagues are frustrated. When you know you're going to shut down, when you realize the largest industry in the state is going to be shut down, there has to be an expectation that our unemployment rates will go through the roof. And now we're five months later. We're sitting five months out, and some of my colleagues have talked about, well, this could have been part of the first special session. Well, this is something that we probably should have handled much, much earlier than that. We have families who have faced food insecurity, potential homelessness. We heard someone, they were talking about, you know, threats and trying to commit suicide, and we haven't acted fast enough. So I am sorry for all those people who are out there who are struggling and are sending us hundreds of emails because we have to do better and we can do better. This bill doesn't go far enough because, once again, there's no resources in it. There's some tools now, but there's not resources. We've been sent hundreds of millions of dollars from the federal government. Some money has been sent for the unemployment security division, but obviously not enough. So some colleagues have asked, and I will once again request, that we provide the tools and the resources to the Department of Employment Security so that we can help these families sooner and not later. And again, it's taken way too long. And as was mentioned earlier, I mean, part of the duty is to help people out, and we've not been able to do that, and that's a strong shortcoming. So I'll be supporting this bill, but I really think that we need to do more. Thank you.
Senator Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to speak in support of the bill. I am concerned by some of the language, obviously. I think there's a lot of broad authority granted without a lot of guidance that has been fully thought through, but it's a step. And so to those hundreds of people that have reached out to me, I think that I'm disturbed that this isn't going to help them. But hopefully, as we work through the backlog, it won't take long, particularly if we look at the next steps, which include additional personnel and technology in order to make this a smoother operation. It's unfortunate, as my colleague mentioned, that we waited to talk about the planning so late in the process, but at least we're talking about it now. And I invite this body to consider additional bills that will provide the resources and the real tools that will address those that have been waiting for some 15 or 20 weeks for their benefits. So I support this measure, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Senator Speer.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support this bill because I think it's the right thing to do. It's very humbling and sad to hear all the stories of the people that were, obviously, this was the first time that they felt that they had a chance to get it off their chest. And I think, yeah, we probably should have been quicker. But truth of the matter is, at the federal level, we didn't even start getting concerned until March, when we knew it was coming in November. Truth of the matter is that a lot of the monies that we've talked about in terms of CARES money coming down was slow and not enough. And we should have more, but we understand that the U.S. Senate left on Friday without extending the $600 benefits. And I think we heard that two or three times. So yes, we should do better, but we can only do better with money. I don't know any way that we have a magic wand or pixie dust to make this better. It's going to be money. That's a hard and very courageous conversation because it's very, very easy to criticize, but we must also have the heart to help. I hope that our federal level, I hope they will get their act together and approve the HEROES Act so that we can get more money down, and we can help Dieter, and we can help the people whose very, very heartrending stories we've heard tonight. That's the truth, and nothing but the truth.
Now, I want to thank the members of this committee for their patience, and certainly I think the support for this bill. And I think, like many of my colleagues, the stories that we've heard, both in emails and this evening, were hard to hear. And I think they're hard to hear because we, these are our friends and our neighbors and our family. And for me, I am going to support this bill both out of committee and look forward to voting for it. voting for it on the floor of the Senate. When I listen to these stories, I not only see my friends and neighbors who did everything from open food pantries to help one another, to reach out and offer support for those who needed resources. And I also know how hard it is to be in that position when you're looking at unemployment benefits or watching your parents lose their jobs or wondering if you're ever going to make it out of things or be able to pay the rent. And I have lived that myself, and I think we owe it to our constituents, our friends and our families, to provide some relief, and that's exactly what this bill does. It is not a magic pill, I don't think, that in any of this, much like the issues we addressed in the 31st special session, there's a magic pill that's going to solve it all at once. But I think that the flexibility that is provided here, the additional extension of benefits, is meaningful and is not something that we should take lightly or take for granted or question whether we should extend that to our friends and family who are struggling. I know that this is also something that was not just all of a sudden on the 15th day of a special session thought of as maybe we should do this idea, but rather a thoughtful process to try and come up with what could be helpful, and it's taken place over a long period of time, and there's been no shortage since we have faced this crisis in a very big way, of folks who have been trying to help to tackle an unprecedented situation, and that has come in many forms, in finding ways to stand up systems within unemployment, in finding ways to process claims faster, in finding ways to get call centers placed together, and in many people over at the Department of Employment Training and Rehabilitation who have been trying to find the solutions and trying to process as many claims as possible. And it is not enough to those who are still waiting for an answer, that this is a step in the right direction. And so I urge my colleagues to support that, knowing that this has been a work in progress and will continue to be a work in progress probably long after we leave this building for this session. With that, all those in favor of Senate Bill Three passing out of the Committee of the Whole, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Senate Bill Number Three will be passed from the Committee of the Whole to the floor of the Senate, and that concludes our business on our agenda this evening. Senator Woodhouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Senate Committee of the Whole do rise and report to the Senate. Thank you.
Senator Parks.
I second that motion.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Senate Committee of the Whole is dissolved, and we will be in a brief recess.
Mr. President Pro Tempore, your Committee of the Whole wishes to refer to Senate Bill Number Three. I said, stand under consideration, big chief report, sending back recommendation, do pass. Signed, Senator Nicole Canizaro, Chair and of Reports, and that concludes business at the desk for this legislative day.
Yahoo. Thank you. Order Business Number 16. Remarks on the floor? Anyone wishing to give remarks? I think everybody's ready to go. Senator Canizaro.
That's the wrong button. Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tempore. I move that the Senate stand in adjournment until the hour of 1:00 p.m. on Monday, August 3rd, and I move that we further stand in adjournment in honor of the late Dick Trachuk, who we heard a little bit about earlier today.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.